Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, the 11th of March, two thousand twenty-four. It is seven oh four P M. My name is Mitch Cohen, and I chair the Northborough Select Board, and I will call this Select Board meeting to order. I will read some opening remarks. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. And welcome to our meeting with, as always, our first item is public comment. If there is anyone in the audience that wishes to to speak with us, to raise any issues, whether they be on the agenda or not, just raise your electronic hand, and I'll be happy to recognize anybody on any agenda item during that agenda item later. So don't feel obligated if you want to talk about something we're talking about anyway. I don't see, I see a number of people in the audience. I don't see any hands up with the meeting just started. I'll give it another moment. Not seeing any electronic hands up, I will consider a public comment at this time closed. Next up, we have a public hearing for street acceptance. Hold on, I've got something to read on that.
Mister Chair, did you forget to?
Oh, I didn't do the whole is everybody here thing. I apologize. I'm always so excited to meet with everyone, and I missed that step. Thank you, Vice Chair, for again. I will now do some introductions and make sure everyone can hear and be heard. We have in the order on my screen, Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Kristen Wickstead.
Here.
Lisa Misselli.
Here.
Laura Zaitin.
Here.
We have with us also Assistant Town Administrator Diane Whackel.
Here.
And Town Finance Director and Town Accountant Jason Little.
Present.
Excellent. And Tim McInerney, our town administrator, is on vacation this week, which is why he is not with us at the moment. Yeah, so now, for real, we will go into the public hearing for the street acceptance. I will open a public hearing pursuant to the provisions of Northborough Municipal Code, Chapter Nine, subsection sixty-four, zero, one, zero. Public hearing on Monday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P M. To consider the layout and acceptance of Harrington Lane. With that, the public hearing is open, and I see Lori Connors, our town planner. I'm going to bring you in, Lori. You can tell us a little bit about this. Hi, Lori, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you all? Thank you for having me this evening. With your permission, did you already read the public hearing notice into the record?
I read what I believe is the public hearing notice, yes.
Okay, very good. With your permission, I'd like to share my screen.
Sure.
Alright, so I thought I'd start off by, can you see this? Is this okay?
We do.
It should be a map.
Yes, we see a map. It might be helpful at some point to zoom in once you've set a little context.
Yes, yes, I'm planning on zooming in.
Excellent.
So I just wanted to orient you folks to Harrington Lane, which is located between Howard Street and Washburn Street. It is south of two ninety. So now I'm gonna zoom in. You just gotta move this over so I can do so. So Harrington Lane is a small cul-de-sac. It serves three single-family homes located off of Washburn Street. It was originally approved in two thousand twenty-one, and the houses are fully constructed at this time. The roadway is constructed. There are a couple of outstanding items. Most of the outstanding items have to do with the Asbelle Plan. However, there are a couple of issues that are still in need of being addressed. There was a guardrail that was installed in the fall. Unfortunately, it was the wrong guardrail that was installed. It was supposed to be a metal guardrail. However, they installed a wood guardrail, so that is going to be replaced. There also was some portions of the sidewalk that were constructed outside of the road right-of-way. So that is in the process of being addressed. And then there are some areas of the right-of-way that still need to be reseeded, so they haven't had sufficient grass growth. So the developer has reseeded, however, we haven't seen the actual grass growth because it was done at the end of the season in the fall. So the developer, Craig Harrington, is actually, should, should be in the audience. Do you see him, Craig?
I see Craig Callahan.
Craig Callahan, yes.
Okay, should I bring him in?
If you could.
Sure. Okay. Craig. I can bring you in, and I see an attorney, Eric Weinstein. I assume that that's related. Has raised his hand. I'm gonna wait for I get to verify. Okay, I'll bring in Tony Weinstein. And how about Vito Colonna? I have a hand up from.
Yes, that is the engineer.
Okay, great. Oh, we've got a whole big party here.
So the team can speak to the outstanding items and the timeline. The Planning Board did provide a letter of support for the layout. However, they do want the outstanding items fully addressed by April fifteenth of this year. So I have spoken with the developer. He has assured me that the outstanding items can be addressed by that time. But perhaps you would like to hear from Craig yourself.
Yes, hello there. I'm hoping I'm coming through. Okay, I'm just coming off of you.
I don't see your video, but if you don't have video, it's fine.
Let me see if I can fix that, but while I'm doing that, good evening. My name is Craig Callahan. A resident of Northborough for over fifteen years and owned all of the land that you see here up on the screen. And correct, I have, just want to reassure the items that Lori was pointing to that was on the letter from Fred Litchfield dated February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. There were seventeen items listed on that. And as of Friday afternoon, ten of those items were completed, or just about sixty percent. So we are moving through those very nicely between my engineering firm, Connorstone, in Northborough, as well as my site contractor. And as Lori said, I'm very motivated to move forward and complete these items by the fifteenth of April, and will continue to update Lori and the town staff as I move through these next four weeks.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Any question, anything else that you or your your folks want to offer before I open it up to the board and then the public?
No, just, this has been quite a process, but I thank the town for the support. This is new to me for any kind of real estate development. I want to make that clear, but I did receive a lot of inputs along the way, as well as I think we developed a nice product at the end, which it really, you know, is meaningful and important to me with the three new residents that were developed on Harrington Lane. So those are pretty much the comments that I have. And again, just to reassure the the board here that I'm working diligently to finish up the remaining items.
Thank you. My understanding, I think I watched the Planning Board meeting where this was discussed, that if the those ten items are not, if all remaining items are not resolved by the deadline that you've set at town meeting, you will suggest that that the meeting pass over this item and then take it up next year because we typically deal with these just at the annual meetings. Is that correct, Lori?
Yes, that is correct. So we would like to see all of the outstanding items resolved, except of course, we don't expect that the grass will grow to a sufficient thickness by April fifteenth. So by the time it should town mean, it's a meeting vote to accept this as a public way, then we expect that the transfer will occur sometime during the summer, most likely in July or August. So that'll give plenty of time for the grass to grow, and so hopefully we'll, we'll get some good coverage by then.
Excellent. Good. I'll open it up to first the board for any, any questions or comments. Okay, I see Julianne and then Laura.
Well, thank you for doing this. I, I drove down there today, and it looks like a lovely development. But my question is, so it sounds like you're working diligently to complete the items that Fred Litchfield identified. Once they're complete, does Fred go back out there and sign off on this? Who, who's the person to to check on the completion of, of these things that need to be addressed?
Yes, so Fred is under contract as a consultant right now. So I do anticipate that Fred will be the party to go out there to do the inspection. And Scott Sharpen here may also accompany him. I know he, he went along with him in the fall when Fred did his inspection, so possibly Scott will also go.
Okay, and they'll send us a letter? I mean, they'll say something at town meeting, but.
Okay, absolutely. I anticipate that Fred will give us an update letter. We discussed it today. And so when he receives word from Craig that the work is complete, so hopefully in advance of April fifteenth, but April fifteenth at the very latest, he will go out there, he will do another inspection. And should the work not be complete, the recommendation to the Planning Board will be to pass over. So that will absolutely be forwarded to you folks.
Hey, thank you.
Great, Laura.
Thank you. This looks really nice, and I appreciate the opportunity to review this. When I was researching, it was a little bit tricky to find some information, I think because it's the new street, but it looked like there may have been, I don't know if there was litigation, but is that all resolved? You know, we're not going to assume any like legal problems from, I don't even understand really what happened. I just saw that something had come up. Is that all set?
I'm sorry, Laura, it's very faint. I can hardly hear what you're saying. Could you, could you maybe repeat that?
Sorry. Okay, is this better?
So far, it's about the same.
Okay, is this better?
I can hear that. Maybe just speak loudly.
Sorry about that. Thank you. My only question was, it looks like, I don't know when this is being developed. Was there litigation or something? I don't know if it was about the road. Is there any litigation that the town is going to take on because of this?
Litigation? Yeah. Is that your question? No, there, there's no litigation. That's been resolved.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question, and I'm going to reboot my headset. Sorry.
Any other questions from the board? Or from town staff? Before we open it up to, to any public comment, I just want to thank you, Mister Callahan, for, for being what, what appears to be a diligent developer for this development. I know on occasion developers will partially finish a road and then, you know, skip town for lack of a better phrase. And, and the town takes the bond and tries to finish the work and things like that. And like, you know, on behalf of the board, certainly appreciate your diligence in trying to move this forward to a, to a really good conclusion. Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I wanted to add. Nothing else from the board. I will open it up to the audience. This is a public hearing. If anyone has any input to the board or any questions for the developer or his team, please raise your electronic hands, and I'd be delighted to recognize you. I see nothing. I'll wait another moment. Ah, we do have a Bob Lipt. I will allow you to talk. Bob, if you could unmute yourself and identify yourself by name and street address and let us know what's on your mind.
Yes, hi, this is Bob Light. I'm the Chair of the Historical Commission, and I just wanted to touch base about the naming of the, of the streets. We had discussed this. Everything looks fine. It's just that there is a town bylaw that says that street naming has to go through the Historical Commission. It turns out that we do have a memo way back from, I think it was nineteen eighty-three, that lists approved names because of historical significance, and Harrington is on that list, so everything is fine. In the future, if a name was chosen for a new street that was not on the list, then we would get input as to what the historical significance of the street was, and then the commission could approve it. So I just wanted to bring that up to make sure there was no, no doubts about the naming of the street. Everything looks fine.
I appreciate that clarification, Bob, and I apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
It's okay. Everyone does.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Is, if Bob is still there, so, so.
He's still there. I've kicked him back into attendee land, but I can bring him back again if.
I, I'm not.
Okay, I'll bring him back in.
The question is, is answerable at this time, but what is the historical significance of the name Harrington?
Well, that's a good point. I'm not sure how the original name was picked. However, I did some research, and there are three historical Harringtons in town. One was in the Revolutionary War. One Harrington was in the Civil War. And there was a Harrington back around eighteen eighty that owned a house painting business that was listed in one of, one of my history books, so. But again, I'm not sure which Harrington it was named for, but it, I guess it doesn't matter because we're not using the first name.
That's, thank you. That's very interesting. I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, Bob. Craig, do you want to enlighten us as to?
No, I, I'm sorry. I thought I, it was the, I did get a list that was sent over to me for all the names to pick from, and Harrington we picked, and the, the name of the subdivision is Clark Woods. And that we named after our dog, so that's the, the, the info on that one.
Okay. Sounds like a good process then. Thank you, both Bob and Craig, for, for that. Okay. Are there any other questions or input from the attendees? Again, raise your electronic hand. I'll be happy to recognize you. I don't see anything else at this time. Does anyone else on the meeting, board members or staff or guests, have anything that they would like to offer at this time? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and then after we close the public hearing, we'll vote on the, the question at hand.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
The board to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne to close the hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion on the application?
Lisa, I'm sorry for dumping the gun. Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve the layout and acceptance of Harrington Lane as a public way pursuant to Northborough Code nine dash six four dash zero and zero, and to place an article on the two thousand twenty-four Annual Town Meeting Warrant for its Public Acceptance.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Laura, seconded by Julianne to approve as, as so moved. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Laura?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations and thank you, and good luck in, in the next month or so finishing those last few items.
Thank you again very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us.
And thanks to this guy.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Spoke some moment to move to whatever part of the meeting they want to. Next up on our agenda, our approval of a couple of sets of meeting minutes. I've been informed that those are not ready for review yet, so we'll be passing over those. And next up, we have Fire Chief update on the fire station project. I see Chief Brandy in here. Chief, I'll bring you in, and then you can let me know if there's anyone else that you would like to bring in.
Yeah, hello.
Hi, Chief, hi, Don.
How's everyone doing? Wonderful, I hope?
Yeah, good evening. Is there anyone else that you would like to bring in from, for the Zoom perspective?
No, I was hoping that Tim was going to be able to join us, but he, unfortunately, as I mentioned to you earlier, he's got another meeting going on. Kind of only split himself. Tim, Tim is our O P M. It's not.
Tim Alex.
I can argue, but Tim Alex. And he wasn't able to join us because he's already had another commitment. I'm going to share my screen if that's okay, but before I do, again, I'm here just to do an, an update on the project, but Mitch, if you have anything as a member of the committee you want to throw in, and Don, the same thing for you, please jump in at any time.
Thank you. Do you prefer, if, if members have questions, would you prefer us to ask as you go along or ask towards the end?
They can ask as we go along.
Excellent. All right, so in case I don't see hands up, members, if you have any questions, I would say just yell out.
Yeah, because I'm not going to see either probably, so. So this is just an update on, on, on where we are now. What I tried to do was, was keep it, keep the background brief, but I wanted to give you a few things as to why we need the new station, and I know I presented to the board before, so they should be familiar with that, but some people in the audience may not be. So in nineteen seventy-four, when they built a new station, one of the reasons they gave was the new station being this station, was they had run out of room for apparatus, and this was, this was the apparatus they had. They had seven pieces of apparatus. Currently, this is what we have. Eighteen pieces of apparatus. So if seven pieces of apparatus were overflowing in the old station, I can tell you eighteen pieces are definitely overflowing in this station, which leads to this. Bumpers touching each other, no room to walk in front of the trucks, stuff stored back that should be on the apparatus floor or other places stored back in the in the utility room, all kinds of issues. So that's one of the big reasons. One of the other reasons, and we've talked about this before, but I want to elaborate a little bit about cancer in the fire service. So there's been a lot of studies, and the latest study showed about sixty percent of line-of-duty deaths for firefighters. That's what the L O D D is, is related to cancer. And firefighters have a higher risk of contracting all types of cancer than the general population. So there's things that we always look that we can do, and how can we prevent this? And you'll see the five things across the bottom. And I'm going to grab a pointer here, and you can see these five things across here. So thing one is we can wear our S C B A all the time, which we do. We have policies that require us to wear our self-contained breathing apparatus during firefighting, during overhaul. We do that. Thing two is we shower as soon as possible when we get back. We do that, but we only have one shower, so we have to work the whole shift through the shower. So that's kind of thing, kind of tough. Thing four is we should wash our gear. We do. We have a new extractor we got from a grant through the Department of Fire Services a couple of years ago. We wash our gear after every fire. Keep it clean, and we have second sets of gear that the guys can, guys and girls can use when they need to. The fifth thing is we should track all exposures. We do that. Every time a firefighter is exposed to any kind of carcinogen, either through a fire or any kind of a exposure through a medical, we track all those things. Number three is the interesting one. That's keep contamination and contaminated gear out of living areas and actually design your station to allow for a healthy living station, and that's what we haven't done yet in the current station we're in. So what does that mean? How, how do we get there? Well, there's five steps to get to a clean fire station. You have to read and learn all about the cancer-causing carcinogens in a fire service. We've done that. Everyone in the fire service has, and I know some people on the, on the committee have done it too, and Mitch, we've talked about it at length before. You need to examine your decontamination procedures for personnel. We do that. We actually have went out and bought special things that we can have on the scene where the firefighters can clean their faces, their hands, their necks while they're on the scene. And when we come back, we also have our exhaust control system that we put in the station after we got it through a grant through the federal government. We've done all that. We should consider healthy green elements in the station. Something we're considering for our new station, natural, natural materials, visual interesting with richness and organic shapes and that type of stuff. You just need to have a hot zone design plan, which I'll go over in just a second. And then finally, focus on the physical and mental health of personnel. This is the other big thing that's causing issues with firefighters now is unfortunately suicide. Firefighters, police officers deal with a lot of stuff that the normal citizen shouldn't, doesn't have to, and thank God, doesn't have to see, but our guys do. And there's ways to deal with that, and that's natural lighting, do the exterior outdoor activities. It gives them activity areas, gives them the ability to decompress somewhat. So how does this play into what we're talking about? So this is the clean station concept. You guys have seen this drawing below here, and I'm going to apologize now for my, my, my messy attempt of showing you where hot zone or warm zone and a cold zone is. But I, I did the best I could. So the hot zone is the red zone. That's the area where we try to keep all the contamination. Now, when I first started in the fire service, my turnout gear went through the station, through the kitchen, upstairs to my bedroom, inside at the end of my bed. When I get up in the middle of the night to, to go on a call, I just spun around, dropped in my boots, pulled my pants up, went downstairs. Now our turnout gear does not leave the apparatus floor. We have signs all over the station. Your knock here does not leave the apparatus floor. But our apparatus floor is wide open, and it's open to the upstairs, and it's open to the sleeping quarters. A new station and the clean station concept actually puts in barriers. So we have the, the hot zone, which is here. Then we have the warm zone, which is our operational area in here. That's our gear storage, our decontamination area, our laundry area, our S C B A storage, some other things in this area. This is pressurized and keeps all the dirty air over here. This is our clean area or our green zone, hot, warm and cold zone. This is where our, our offices are. This is where the, the meeting room is, the E O C, the lobby where people would come in to meet it. This is all the clean, clean room area. So they don't, people coming into the station aren't exposed to the contaminants, which right now, unfortunately, they are. So that's the clean station concept. This is super, super important to the firefighters here in Northborough and across the country, but we unfortunately have had several firefighters who have had bouts of cancer who are still on the job now. We've had cough firefighters and other people that we know that have passed from cancer, a job-related cancer. So this is really important to all of us. I can't, I can't stress how big of a part of the news, need of the new station this is. So I wanted to give you a little timeline. Now, I'm not going all the way back to how we got to where we are. But I wanted to start in two thousand twenty-three when we started with our, our program development after we've already selected the architects. So there was discussion with fire department leadership, a survey of the department personnel, space needs analysis. That all, that all happened between September fifteenth and February twenty-eighth, and then a schematic design phase. There were numerous fire station building committee meetings. It was a joint meeting with the design review and master plan implementation or public input meetings. More design, separate design review committee meetings. That took us all to the end of design review. Now we're in design development. So design development started on two twenty-nine. It goes through the end of May. Again, more fire station building committees. Right now, we have a tentative date for our next design review meeting of April eleventh. After today's meeting, I'm not sure if that's going to happen or not. We talked about delaying it, but I think the architects may have some concern with delaying it, so I'm waiting to hear back from them, what they want to do with that. We have a zoning board of adjustment meeting scheduled for three twenty- We have a zoning board of adjustment meeting scheduled for three twenty-six. That will be going through, there are uh, three waivers we need to uh, or three variances we need to submit for. And uh. That doesn't have anything necessarily to do with the final design, with design review, so that meeting will be going through. And then right now, we have our planning board meeting scheduled for four sixteen twenty-four. After design development is done, the next phase is construction documents. Which again, has more fire station building committee meetings and a planning board meeting, that's when we actually put the documents together, get ready to go out to bid. So we know the exact price, not the exact price, we have a better idea of what it's gonna be. Now, I know you've all seen this price that's floating around and it was in the presentation, that's just, that's a schematic design price. That is not your design, your final design price, and and I'll talk about that a little bit in a few minutes. Uh, some important dates, and I knew you've seen this before, but I wanna mention it again, is uh, September twenty-fourth is the deadline for the select board to place the project on the ballot. A select board has to make uh, that decision, uh, we're looking at the special town meeting uh, in the month of October. Uh. According to our, our clerk, the uh, meeting can be no later than ten fourteen, so we're looking at scheduling it on ten seven. And then we'll, we'll have a debt exclusion vote, which will be in conjunction with the national election on eleven five twenty twenty-four. Uh, I think that's a great idea, we'll hopefully get a big turnout for the national, national election, and that'll give us a. A good feeling of what the people are actually looking for and 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 whether or not they think this is a good idea to move forward. So this is our, our site design, and this is a little bit different than the site design I had showed you all before. And this is a couple of the changes I'm gonna show you with my little pointer. Initially, all the fire department parking was over here on this side. And this has all been relocated to the back of the building. And this wall has been bumped out, you can see, this used to be straight across, is bumped out. One of the big reasons for this is this increased our ability for snow storage here and all along this side. So that gives us much more room for s- snow storage. I spoke with our D P W director, and between this snow storage. The ability to store it in this little drive-through area and a few of the other areas. He has all the confidence in the world, we should have enough to do it there, and if need be, they can come in, if we get. A uh, like they got out west just recently with the, the feet of snow instead of the inches of snow. Uh, more than able to come in with a loader and and get rid of anything extra. Uh, the guest parking is separate from the uh, operations parking, and that was done. Specifically because the apparatus, some apparatus will be coming out the back door and going this way. And right now, we do have people that with our current station, if they're coming in, we're trying to leave, that's a really dangerous situation. Uh, the building was placed in such a way to put the apparatus bay away from the entrance. To the uh, restaurant across the way from Dunkin' Donuts here, so that's why it's placed this way with the apparatus bay over here. It's the, does it designed in such a way, the rear of the building, and I'll talk a little bit more about the P V panels on the back of the apparatus bay. Uh, there's several areas, and if I zoomed in here, you could see that we're looking at for possible E V charging station. Uh, state law requires us to have wiring in place for eleven stations, that's a requirement. That doesn't mean we have to have eleven stations in place, we have to have the wiring, the infrastructure in place for that. Uh, the committee is currently considering potentially six. But that's still, we're, we're, and we're hoping to be able to offset the cost of that with some grants if possible. Uh, the only other thing on this uh, slide I wanna talk about is, is the heating of the uh, of the uh, a apron. Fire, a fire department apron is the area that's in front of the apparatus base. And we're looking at going out about twenty-five feet and heating that area to help. Keeping the snow melt, makes it easier for uh, snow removal for the D P W, because they don't have to come in right next to the building. And the same thing would be back here, but it's not so much of a snow melt that it causes a problem down on. Uh, Route twenty with all the water flowing down there, it'll be absorbed by the snow and taken out of the way, so that's the reason that's set up that way. This is uh, the. The fire station building committee approved three walls to go to the design review, and I'm gonna show you all three walls. Explain a little bit about, about the retaining walls, but I'm not gonna get super deep into them, if you have a question, make a note of it or speak right up. So this is designed, this is wall one, which is a straight wall. The straight wall looks like this, goes back about two feet, ten inches from the base, so it's just about vertical. Something very important to understand is no matter what wall of the design we pick. This wall and this wall will be straight walls. Simply because of their proximity to the uh, neighbors. The wall in the back is the wall we're talking about potentially having a different design for. So this is, this is the one that's built into the base price, this design here. Does require a thing called GeoGrid. Which is a, a, a fabric that is put in every five feet or so that goes back into the soil, basically helps clo- helps keep the wall up. So the wall doesn't fall down into us. The second wall is the batter wall option. So a batter wall, and you can see down here. Okay? Is at an angle like this. So it goes back a little bit further. Um. Gives a little bit nicer of a look. So you don't have that flat wall there, and that would batter wall would be across this area here. So if you're looking at it from up, and let me back up here just a second. These are cross sections of what you would be looking at, so you could see how it's a much more angled wall. Okay, and as a, as a reference point. This is a person in a car. So as a reference point to the height of the wall.
Chief, if I could jump in for just a second, explain one item is the, um, on the slides, you, you list the height. Of the wall is thirty feet, that's just the maximum point, basically at the southwest corner of the site. It would be in the thirty-foot range and would be sloping shorter in every other direction.
Right here.
Cross section describes that.
That's this area right here, anywhere else it drops down. That's the highest point, thank you for pointing that out, Mitch.
Sure.
So that's, that's wall one, and that was one of the alternatives we were given the price to, that's about. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than the base wall, I believe. This is wall two, which is a battered, a terraced battered wall, what the heck does that mean? So a terrace battered wall means. It, it's a battered wall, but with one single terrace right here. Which would give you an area for plantings, and you can see that's where this terrace is here. Looks a little bit nicer, you can see the cross sections, in particular, you can see. This area here, and that's what this planting here indicates. So we'll go up a little bit, have an area for planting and then go up the rest of the way. Again, uh, as, as Mitch had said, uh, the wall. Little bit higher at the highest point, but that's only right here, goes down from there. Uh, this one, we do not have a price for. Because we, that wall didn't come in until after we had uh, already uh, made some uh, had some discussions before, and they had already gone to the uh. Uh, uh, cost estimator, so we don't have a price for that wall, we're waiting to get an estimate on that wall. Wall three was a terrace wall option. And this is a full terrace wall. So it goes up one terrace, two terraces, three terraces. You can see that, this one, we can actually access off Monroe Street and come in here. If we wanna access area off Monroe Street, the problem is it does go much further back. Uh, which leaves a little concern, we've had this discussion for potential, we've talked about future parking at some point in time back in this area for the downtown. This, we don't know yet, because we don't have the full, you know, we haven't looked at designs for parking back there, and that's not part of the scope of this project. But it does, it is something to consider that this goes much further back. The other important consideration is, this is about well over six hundred thousand dollars above the base price to do this wall option. Uh, that's the three walls we're looking at. This is the current landscape design we have. There's a couple of things I wanna point out on the landscape design, if I may. So. These are some of the bollard light details we're looking at, these are. Items to go around areas here, here, across the front, so. Bollard lights are areas that'll light the sidewalk, and it also protects parts of the building from being hit, so those are bollard lights. Each area fence, each area of wall will have a fence. So if it's a terrace wall, each terrace will have a fence, if it's the straight wall, the top area will have a fence, this is the proposed design for that. And one of the things we're talking, and there'll be a bench there, and one of the things we're talking about, there's a nine-one-one memorial in town, nine eleven memorial. That a lot of people don't even know we have, and it's over at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Church Street. We talked about it during today's um. Fire station building committee, and I really would love to have this um, moved from where it is to the new station. And that would be right in this area here, this is where it would be. It would get a lot more uh, visibility here, we'd be able to put a bench there. Uh, the thing is, it was, it's owned by the town, it was donated to the town, but it was a Boy Scout project. And as we discussed at this meeting today, and Mitch and Don, you're more than welcome to jump in here. It's my belief that we shouldn't move forward until we talk to the scout troop one who did this. Now, one of the members of the um. Fire station building committee, uh, Tom Riordan has already reached out to them, had success, and is, I should be hearing back from some of them shortly. Uh, to get their opinion, uh, but I really think it'd be a great idea to be able to move that over here into this area. Uh, to again, just get much more uh. Much more appropriate location for it, and not just out here in the middle of a. Of, of, of an intersection of a street where I don't even know if people know where it's at or even stop there. You'll see we've added some trees along here. That was in uh. Uh, the uh, design review committee had indicated they like some streetscape, some street side trees, now one of the things we need to maintain. Is this visibility here, cuz once the fire trucks come out, they need to be able to see left and right or west and east. So we wanted to put trees, but the trees are back further. So it does help uh, soften the front of the building, there's also shrubbery across here, trees across this way. Trees all along here and some other plantings all along here. So this is the uh, the um, landscape design that was submitted to the uh, design review committee uh, for their review. Now I'm gonna go through the interior and exterior and just. You've seen this before, but I wanted to just give you a little bit of definition about it. The total square foot for the first floor is twenty-two thousand square feet, so that's the footprint of the design. Uh, this includes operations area, it's designed as a clean station, which I've already talked to you about. And it's for distinct operational areas, and this is the operations area. Which includes the hot zone and the warm zone, this is the apparatus area, this is the gear storage area. Captain's, uh, shift officer's office, reports. Um, laundry, that's all in this area. The administration area is all the pink areas. So that's the conference room, the chief's office, the admin, the deputy chief's office. Uh, uh, storage areas, that's all in this area, bathrooms. The blue areas are the, are the, here, the E O C, the training and the public access is the front lobby where we're talking, talking about putting our hand tub or our anti-cand tub. Where the people would come in, the bathrooms in the E O C, which is a, for the emergency operations center, the training room, and if. If needed, a public use room. Mechanicals are all in gray, that includes stair, staircases, server area. Heating areas, electrical, those are all in gray. So this is the first floor. Floor two is the same thing. Where green is all of the uh, clean areas, and this is where all have to do with firefighter living areas. Gray, and this is, this is all cold zone areas. Gray is mechanical. Now you see, this is listed as operations, cuz this is the flagpole, this is the fire pole, which goes down into the operations area. So there will be some stuff put in place to ensure that that, that exhaust and stuff cannot come up through into the uh, living quarters. And then this is part of the training tower, so that's why part of this is also colored that way. Now, it's important to note that there's seven bedrooms. Which if we get, if uh, we get the uh, safer grant, which we've uh, gotten permission from you uh, folks to apply for. That would give us seven personnel on duty, each with their own bedroom, which is critical for uh, for mental well-being, it's critical for healthy uh, living. And it's also critical for gender separation, so we're really excited about that. If need be, if we expand as time goes on, each bedroom will actually have two beds. So we can in the future go up to six, up to uh, fourteen people, so that would be great. We have individual, two individual restrooms and uh, for, that are just restrooms, and there's three individual showers. It's less, let's move, as I talked to you about, that key to a clean station. Lets us move an on-duty shift through the showers much quicker when they come back from the fire than having only one shower, we now have three showers. So it makes it much quicker to do that. We have a fitness area which is here. This is our, our ready room, our kitchen area where the firefighters spend their time, uh, nights, weekends, uh. You know, they uh, where they prepare their foods, directly off of here is a terrace area. Uh, and uh, where they can put a picnic table and a, and a, and a grill allows them to uh. To have some, a nice area where they can go to, go to that's outside the station, get some beautiful, natural views of the back area. And this is a green roof in a terrace area that we've talked about. Um, one of the things we've talked about is also making the building as green as possible, so that's the purpose for this green roof area here. We can also, if we wish to, some of the firefighters have talked about a garden. So it'd be a great place to put in some, to put in a garden, so they can actually have uh, grow some of their own food. I told them they can't have chickens back there, I'm sorry, no, we're not gonna allow that, but you know, a, a garden, a garden may work, so that's what this area is for. So let's take a walk around the building. And it's important as we're looking at this from the uh, uh, West Main Street side to understand some of the things that we've done, so we've gone with red, red brick construction. To complement current downtown buildings. When you build a municipal building. We can't just go out and say, this is the brick we want. Because it's a municipal building, we have to go through a bidding process. And part of that bidding process includes the general contractor having to go out to three different vendors. And those vendors will come in and make a bid. Now, they're supposed to get as close as they can to the color we want, but it may not be the color that we have specified. We can't say no. There's kind of some restrictions on that, so we have to say, this is what we're looking for. This building is built to withstand harsh weather, that's what the brick's for, with minimal ongoing maintenance, we want this building to last forty years. If we put wood trim everywhere, that's a lot of maintenance. And a lot of breaking, breakdown of, of, of that wood potentially, so that's what this is, is designed for. There's been some questions about putting encasement windows in, or excuse me, double hung windows in here. I found out today that, that uh, double hung windows will not support triple glazed windows, which is required to meet the energy code. Uh, just found that out from the architects today, they reached out to me to tell me, so. Uh, they are looking at different things, but that is one of the things that, that they reached out to tell me. We've put arches over the door. To help give, uh, to help blend in with some of the arches we have in town on the Aqua Duck, plus to give you that old fire station feeling, feeling. And there's a nice arch over here. One of the things the design review had asked for was a deeper arch here, so originally that was two feet, that's now a four-foot arch. So people can get in out of the weather when they're waiting to come into the building, or trying to come into the building. Uh, and we've also put a training tower with a clock on it and windows all around. This here is a Maltese cross, so we tried to uh, give you a, a feeling of a, of a fire department. A symbol on the front of the building, and of course, North Borough Fire Department label across here. Now I'm gonna caution you, when you look at this bird's eye view. This is the only bird's eye view I could find, and I already told you once that this parking is not here anymore. So this parking is not here, and this is not the tower we're proposing, but this is the only good picture I had of these items here, which are our monitors that we're proposing. Those roof monitors bring light into the building, give us natural light. Which again, is good for the mental health of, of the firefighters, plus it reduces our, our dependence on having to have lights on in the bay all the time. So that's one of the reasons we've gone with this, one of the concerns was, well, will, will these leak? We've been assured by the uh, by the architects and by our owner's project manager, that those, that, that the warranty that goes with. The inst- uh, the building, uh, will go with those, and there shouldn't be any issues with it, and flat roofs are just, are, are fine to put into fire stations. The other bird's eye view, again, I'm gonna caution you, still shows the, the old building, I mean, the old tower in the parking, but I wanted to show you this. Cuz it showed the two pergolas that were in the back, one over the terrace area here with the grill area, and one over here, and the reason I wanted to show those. Is because that was a request from uh, the landscape uh, uh, member on the design review, he recommended we put those on there. For the protection of the firefighters, so they weren't on the original uh, design, but that's why those are there. So we look at the building from the northeast elevation. You can see the arches, you can see the windows up here, there's a clock up in the, up in the tower up here. You look at it from the northwest elevation, again. You'll see we changed a little bit of the brick here to give it some definition, I really like this look. Uh, we have the banding that's continued all the way around here. Continues all the way around the building, really helps separate and define it. One of the things that the, that the design uh, guidelines talk about is me taking a big building and making it look so it's not super big. And a way to do some of that is by throwing in this tower and this banding, and it tower bumps out here, and it's a. So that helps break down the building, they're having this big flat front of the building, so that's what all these elements are for. This up here, these are snow fences that help the snow from sliding down. Uh, those were included on, on, on this, on this version. This is a sign that we've talked about, and I'll talk about that in a second, and this is the area where we would be talking about putting the memorial, moving to nine eleven. And this is the area where we would be talking about putting the memorial, moving the nine eleven memorial. Also in this area would be a flagpole that you can't see at, in this thing. This is a good look at that nine eleven memorial that we're talking about moving. This is Pleasant Street, this is the intersect, I'm sorry, this is Church Street, this is Pleasant Street. You walk across here, which is what this looks like. Here's where the memorial is, and this is what, this is what it looks like. The intent would be to clean this off with pressure washing. So it's, we don't have these dark colors here, again, it's, I don't know what the maintenance is that's done here every year, I assume D P W does something. But this was, I was, was donated, I found a great video, but I can't find what year it was donated. So, I can tell you, Don was speaking, and, and Don says it was a long time ago, so I'm not quite sure when it was done, but it was done a while ago. So this is one thing. And then this is a sign that was approved, and I've talked a little bit about this, but I wanted to bring this up again because some things came up in, in design review about whether or not the, the select board was going to come up with a special design for municipal buildings. And I'm not going to speak to that either way, that's not within my purview. But I can, I just wanted to say, this is a sign that we've talked about. There is an electronic component to this sign, and I know there's some concerns because there may be a prohibition about that, and that's something that if that's in case, we, in case we may go to Z B A for that. We feel it's really nice, instead of having to tow this sign around that the D P W tows around for, that we got through a grant from for emergency management, that we would actually have a nice sign in the downtown that the town controls as opposed to the lion sign, which town doesn't control and isn't all that great sometimes, that we can actually put events up such as Apple Fest, fire safety stuff, town meetings. Trails committee meetings, anything, all kinds of meetings we can put up there, so we really thought this was a good idea. Takes us around to the west elevation, we can see again the windows up here, we really like this concept of the windows all around. The southwest elevation. The south elevation, now you see the south elevation, we didn't put the arches here, mainly because the back of this building faces that retaining wall. But we didn't think that extra cost back here warranted that, so we really wanted to we're looking at, at anywhere we can save money, and we thought that this was a, a good way, one good step we could do to save some money. This would be your southeast elevation, your east elevation, and this would be looking at the wall. So the building would end here, and this wall would be down here, again, there'd be plantings, there'd be everything here, you probably wouldn't even see this wall. But we wanted to make sure you knew that wall was there, so that's why this was listed the way it is. That's it for walking around the building. I'm going to talk a little bit about the cost and how we got there. So there's two parts when you're talking about cost of a building, there's the hard construction cost. So hard constructions costs are, are based on your schematic designs, which are not fully developed. There's a lot of assumptions that the cost estimator needs to make. And that's based on their knowledge, your experience and information they're given by the architect and their owner's project manager. So the statement of probable cost includes the design pricings and contingencies of ten percent to allow for those unknown. They also provided us with fourteen alternate options in one allowance order of magnitude alternate. And that sounds like it's really daunting, what the heck does that mean? Well, the alternate options are things such as categories for sustainable strategies, such as doing a geothermal power. Geothermal heating instead of the traditional heating, such as envelope upgrades to help meeting, to go above and beyond, or even just to meet the energy code. Alternate materials, instead of using brick to use something else. Retaining wall options, like the ones I showed you. And the underground conduit for the, for antenna underwater tank, which is this, which was the allowance order of magnitude, which is here. I tell you right now, before I go past this slide. The Fire Station Building Committee has already decided to not go forward with that allowance order of magnitude alternate, mainly because of cost. It would have improved our communications for both us and the police. It would have been a great thing to do while we're on the construction. However, the cost estimator estimated that somewhere between seven hundred and nine hundred thousand, just to get the conduit up to the top of the antenna. The Fire Station Building Committee decided as a group, it wasn't worth that cost. That's something maybe in the future, if we talk about a separate project, if there's another grant, if there's parking that we're going to do back there, something we can look at. But we just did not think it was appropriate for this project. The other part of a project cost are your soft costs. So your soft costs are your furnishings, your furnitures, your fixtures, your equipment, your program-related equipment. Things like fans in the building, the primal vent system that some of it will move over, we'll, we'll need other stuff. Data telecom equipment, A V equipment, security, cameras. Contingencies, your owner's project fees, your design fees, your commissioning. When you, when you do a building, at the very end, you have it commissioned, which means you have someone come in and says, okay. Did the designer build, or did the construction of this building actually meet out with design, what was supposed to happen? Does the project test out properly, and that's what the commissioning is. Any legal documents, any utility assessment, any material fees. So your total project cost are your hard costs, which are your construction costs, plus your soft costs. Okay, so how do we get there? Really important to understand, the feasibility study that was done back in twenty nineteen was and the plan that was, went with that was just part of that feasibility study. It wasn't based on actual programmatic, the programmatic programs that we did recently. It wasn't necessarily based, it wasn't based on good surveys. It was based on the G I S surveys. So in comparison, in twenty twenty-four, we actually went out and, and, and looked at what do we need to do to fall under the mass, the M G L chapter one forty-nine laws. Prior to twenty twenty, escalation was about three point eight to four point zero percent annually. That was prior to pandemic. So that's what was built into the twenty nineteen plan, we were using those numbers. And since twenty twenty, things have changed just a tad, and we're upwards of eighteen to fifteen percent escalations annually. That isn't just for us, that's for anything. I've spoken with, with, with other fire chiefs, I've spoken with other people that are with fire trucks we've talked to you about before. This is the escalation that we're dealing with, eight percent to fifteen percent. So what they did, what, what the cost estimators did in the O P M, they said, okay, if we take the study that was done in twenty nineteen. We apply the proper escalation fees. We look at, at, you know, inflation, and then we look at the additional site costs, because remember, we didn't know those walls were going to be needed. We're pretty much online for what it should be. So it, it, it says they're comparable, so we're not that far off from what the twenty nineteen, just the escalation, the additional walls have really hurt us. So what does that put it at? Oh my God, look at this number. I can tell you that you're not the only one that said, oh my God, look at this number when it came in. Don here, I had to pick her up off the floor, and everyone else on the Fire Station Committee said, wow, this is a big number. So your hard costs, your construction costs are thirty point nine million. Those alternates I talked about are anywhere between two point one and six point seven million. Which brings your total construction cost up to thirty-three to three seven point six million. Now again, remember what I said, this is schematic design. There's a lot of, guesses is not the word I want to use, but there's a lot of estimates within here. Very senior fiction, and that, that can be seen here when we talk about point seven three, all the way up to one point three five million for some of these soft costs here. And then five point one to six point two five million for some of these soft costs here. And then your contingencies. The contingencies are four point one to four point seven million. So that takes your total range of your, of your product under schematic design. At forty-three to forty-nine point nine million. Now, do I foresee that number, and this came up in the Fire Station Building Committee today, and can we say that that number's going to go down? I, I would assume, yeah. But I, but the problem is, I'm not, I don't know what's going to happen between now and when, and when the with the economy, you know, things, things change all the time, but I would be very shocked to see this number come in where this is. And if, you know, Mitch, you were in the meeting today, and we can talk, we can speak about this a little bit, a little bit later, or you can speak to it now if you want, or, or Don. But I, this number would surprise me if it came in this high, you want to talk about it now Mitch, or let me go to the next slide?
Yeah, I mean, the, the range is primarily due to undecided, yet to be decided decisions. Basically, some of the alternates. So you talked about, well, we've been given pricing on three different wall options. We have already decided to not use the most expensive wall option. We have not yet heard about the details of different heating systems. And there's quite a range in prices for those. Geothermal, for example, is going to be quite a lot more than a more traditional system with some long-term benefits, and we don't know those long-term benefits yet. That, that's probably two million dollars worth of that range in there is on the assumption we chose the geothermal, it would be at the higher end, we may very well not choose that. And there are a number of alternates that we haven't even begun to discuss yet, that are in the pricing. With base assuming you don't choose anything, and at the high end, you chose the most expensive option. Of various alternates, so we're, we're going through that process, and some of those decisions will take another few months to to, to get through, and that helps narrow down that range. And we will also be having a meeting with our project manager and architects. I don't know if you're going to bring this up, but we, we haven't scheduled it yet, because we just decided that officially this morning. To sort of go through particularly the, the base portions or the thirty-two point nine, the thirty point nine construction estimate. To see, are there items in there that we may want to make some minor changes to that don't impact the program? But we might be able to save a little bit of money.
Those alternatives Mitch was talking about are right here. I'm ahead of you Mitch, look at that, isn't that amazing? So, these are the, these ones up here. These are for green stations, for the green stations, so this talks about eleven E V charging station. This is, this is the added cost for that, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And again, it's an estimate. And again, we could maybe get a grant to offset some of that, but we don't know. P V on the sloped and flat roofs, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Now, the code requires us to build the station so it's P V ready. That doesn't mean that we're going to be, the P V's on there. It would be my preference to put that on during the construction, because now we're not going back afterwards drilling holes. Doing stuff, so I don't want to, you know, so it's part of the construction project, I think that's a much wider choice. And then this is putting green roofs in front of the building in, in, in place of some of the other roofing materials, and that's add thirty-two thousand. This is some energy code updates, upgrades, which we may not have any choice over. So we don't know about these yet, and this is that triple glazed windows that I had just mentioned, that's a big increase. Triple glaze changes, which then would affect the curtain walls, that's a big change. And then add closed cell insulation between the studs and the exterior, that's about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Over here, the material options, though, we talked a lot about these during the Fire Station Building Committee meetings. One of which is to asphalt shingles in lieu of the standing seams. Now, the standing seam is what you saw on the picture I showed, it's a metal standing seam roof. If we chose to go with asphalt shingles, we could save three hundred and seven thousand dollars. But what's the difference? Well, standing seam, metal roof is going to last you, what Mitch, a hundred years maybe, you know, or at least the life of the building, most likely. Asphalt shingles, it really depends on what we go with, there's twenty years, there's twenty-five years, there's thirty, there's thirty-five years. And once we put those up, if we put P V below it, now we have the cost of removing the P V, P V if we have to change those roofing. So, as the committee has mostly recommended to go against this, even though there was the savings. Because we thought that the standing seam roof was a better way in the long run to go to save money. Overhead glazed, glazed doors. So, there was some talk during design review, instead of the four, the folding, the four-fold bifold doors, to go with regular overhead doors. That's actually an increase of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to go with those doors over the four, four-fold doors, which shocked not only the members of the architect, the architects, or the O P M, that shocked us as well, but when we, we went back and we asked again for the cost estimator. He said, no, that, that's an actual number, it's actually costing us more now and taking longer to get the overhead doors. Okay, if you wanted to go with brick veneer, in lieu of the, of some of the other stuff in front of the building. There would be a one, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, that's the, the metal over the doors and stuff, I believe. If we wanted to go with aluminum, aluminum composite metal panels in lieu of the zinc panels, we could save forty-nine thousand. We haven't made decisions on any of these yet. The retaining wall, the reason this slashes across here is because this is the one we said no to. An increase of six hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the base. This is the one we said, maybe, that's an increase of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars from the base, that's strictly the batter wall. We figured the batter wall with the terrace, it's going to be somewhere in between these two, we don't know. I'm going to be very honest with you, we don't know what the cost of it is, we're hoping to get that cost. Here's the H V A C. If we went with an air source variable, a V F R system, as opposed to what's in the base, it could save us two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. If we went with a, a geothermal system. Two point two six million dollar increase. But, as Mitch said, during the presentation, they're going to tell us, okay, it's going to cost you two point six million, but it's going to save you five million over the long run. Or it's going to cost you two point six million, but it's not going to save you anything. But it's going to be environmentally friendly, or it's going to cost you, it'll save you five, we don't know any of that yet. That would be during the actual presentation, and that's why no decisions were made on this. And then this is that antenna that I talked about, you can see there's a slash across here, because again, we made that decision that the seven to nine hundred thousand just was not, in my opinion, as the fire chief viable at this time. That's the, that's my, that's what I put towards the Fire Station Building Committee, and they went with that, that alternative, and that's been removed from one of the alternatives. Okay, that takes us to this slide, which I think is a really important slide. So every, the, the T C I, which is the construction cost estimator, wanted us to be aware of this, and they made a big note of this, they said this cost estimate includes escalation and market bidding conditions contingent up until the end of twenty twenty-four. And again, those bid documents that you saw on those timelines are scheduled to go out at the end of twenty twenty-four, October, November of twenty twenty-four. If bidding is delayed, the annual increase will be between seven to ten percent each year. So if the bidding is delayed past into the new year, into twenty twenty-five, you can count on the seven to ten percent range of price increase from what we presented. That's not to scare anyone, please, that's not the intent. I feel that if, if we as the Fire Station Building Committee, and I presented this to the Fire Station Building Committee before I presented it tonight to make sure that everything we're, we're talking about was okay with you guys. That we felt we would be in the wrong if we didn't let you and the citizens know that that was an important concept. This Q R code is the one that takes you right to our N B hyphen firestation.org, which is the best place to get any updated information. We update the frequently, frequently asked questions on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. We update our meeting links, our, and we update all of our, our upcoming projected meetings on this. So before I stop sharing for comments, are there any questions I need to do here, or is it okay if I stop sharing, so we can see everybody?
Chief, if you could go back to that alternates screen again, yeah, right there. I, I just want to reiterate something that we talked about a little bit there. The forty-nine point nine million high-end estimate, that assumes we choose the most expensive option out of each of these categories. And we've already made some decisions not to do that.
Right here and here, we've gotten rid of all that, correct?
Yeah, so the seven to nine hundred thousand for the antenna, and the six hundred thousand for the fanciest of the retaining walls. We've already crossed those off of our list, and we're continuing to do this, and we will, on the committee, get presentations from engineers and architects about some of these things like H V A C. And we'll get some, some displays of some of the brick veneers and things like that, so we can make those decisions as we move along. Lisa?
While we're on this page, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. The, the allowance order of magnitude. And it says conduit underground between the fire station and the water tank, could you explain what that was?
Yeah, the, the intent was to, so, so right now, the antennas are up on top of the fire station here. If we put the antennas up on our antennas, so we can receive information at the fire station, up on top of the fire station where we're going to be. We have no line of sight from there to the police station, which removes some of our ability to do some of the things we were hoping to with microwave, with microwave antennas. Which gives us much more control, much, much better coverage. So the intent was to put some antennas up on top of the water tower that sits up on the property behind the station. Not big antennas, not a big antenna like is at the police station, simply smaller antennas that would be up on top of that water tower that would have direct line to the police department, which would allow us to use microwave connectivity. Which gives us better coverage for police, fire, gives us a lot of other alternatives. However, I just thought that number was too big, and I just couldn't, I, I couldn't go with it.
Is it possible that you could use some of your, some of your tower and have it inside, under the roof?
I think the idea is, is for, it, it needs to, to be higher than that. So that's why to go to the water tower that is both up the hill and then even higher up. So that's why to go to the water tower that is both up the hill and then even higher up than the tower, to get that line of sight from that water tower over to the uh, police station. And this, the seven to nine hundred thousand dollars is just the conduit, it's not even the equipment to do that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what it was for. Um, and then, could we go back to the landscape design slide? Okay, good. Um, where, show me where your, the sidewalk, your sidewalk is coming on the outside. You didn't talk about the sidewalk, so.
Sidewalk is right here, right down, right, right as it was proposed before, right here.
And how does it connect to both properties?
It doesn't connect, it it doesn't, so uh, the the original proposal was to not connect it to that, to the properties on either side. Uh, we got a message from, uh, we got a uh, as part of our first design review presentation, we got something back from the design review that said, please consider connecting that to the neighboring property. Now, we can't build in the neighboring property, so we said either connect or continue it on. We don't have the right to build on that, on that, on that property, it's not part of this project. So we looked at how to connect it, we looked at A D A and simply do, following A D A would connect to that, to that sidewalk that goes up across and around in front of hillside. Uh, after our next uh, uh, design review uh, project or meeting, the design review said, we would prefer if you wouldn't connect it, so that's where that currently sits.
So, so the letter that says make it straight, straight across, where where originally the sidewalk would go as a public way?
It ends at our property line.
It ends at your property line.
We can't, we don't, we, we can't go and build in someone else's property.
That's right, that's why.
It's part of, it's part of this project, we're not, we, we can't do that.
We could ask, for example, the D P W to approach the neighboring property owner and inquire as far as a, you know, a, a project that would be either town funded or funded by that property owner.
Yeah, it's a separate project.
This, this project is confined to the bounds of the property.
But it would be, but it would be kept as close to Route twenty as a straight line and not going up the hill to that.
This is a perfectly straight line across, just like it was originally presented in the first plan that we did.
Okay, so the little corner that comes from the bank side, that's actually gonna be straight.
Yeah, go straight across there.
Yeah, go.
Because of this, it's hard to tell, we're also talking, talking to those about cleaning some of this mess up here, but yes, this is going straight across. This was left over from the original uh, at the second proposal when we were asked to connect it from design review, and then this is where it would just come across and end at our property.
Okay, and it, and at the bank side, that's gonna be straight and not come in at that little angle, right?
This is a straight across and would end at our property line.
You're not connecting to the bank side either?
It would connect, if if it was there, I, I, the, the idea is if it's, if we're not gonna go, we're not gonna build a new, a new one, we'll connect into their, into what's already there.
All right, because the reason I'm asking those two questions is, when it, when it does get put in, even if it's just going to end to end of the property, it should be kept in the same line as what an existing uh, sidewalk looks like coming down from the green, the common, I mean. So, so that when it's, when it's straight across, because if you were doing a snowplow or somebody was was snowplowing the sidewalk, it would be a lot easier for them to go straight instead of take a little turn down and over. And then at the point of having another project to be done, that in front of the hillside grill and the seven monument place buildings, that would be straight where their area is on the ground and not in their, in their area proper.
Right across here, yeah, and again, we can't build on the bank's property, just like we can't build over here, so our property, we'll go to our town law, to our property lines both ways, straight across.
All right, thank you, I have one more question later on when you finish, but, thank you.
Kristen.
Um, so hi, thanks for this. Um, thanks to the whole fire station building committee, I know you guys have been working on this for a really long time, and I know it's a lot of meetings, um, so I just wanna let you all know that I really appreciate all that work you've been doing behind the scenes. Um, so I also may have missed this, I probably missed it, it was a lot to take in, I haven't really looked at any of this stuff yet in such great detail, but um, is there a weight room? And can you show me on one of those early slides with the colors, the color coded?
So this is, this is only color coded for the first floor.
Yeah.
The answer is yes, there is a fitness room. And the fitness room is up here on the second floor.
Oh, it's on the second floor, okay. Oh, there it is, yeah.
And it's, it's up here, and and one of the things, a requirement of that, so we, we put a, a window in here to open that up a little bit, but one of the requirements of that fitness room is it can't be connected at all, can't get any exhaust, can't get anything from here, so that's in your clean, cold area.
Yeah, okay. All right, good, yeah, I missed that. And then across from that, that's the kitchen, and that obviously has that same rule.
Yep. Everything up here, everything up here is in the clean area, and except here, and you notice there's a door here on the, where the fire pole is, and that will be utilized to keep any containment, it's out in the same thing here.
Right, yeah, no, it's a really amazing building. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Julianne.
Um, I have a couple of questions. So one is, um, there's a fitness room and a training tower and a training room?
Yeah, completely different things. A fitness room is actually like a gym, as Kristen said. Treadmill, it's where the weights are, that's where the bike is, that's where firefighters go on a daily basis, we have firefighters that use our, our, our workout room here every day. On duty, off duty, they come in and use it. So this is actually a physical fitness room. If you look at our training tower, that's for firefighter training. That's for stretching hose lines, deploying hose lines upstairs, practicing uh, making, you know, removing victims down the stairs, those types of things. This is a training room as an educational training room in our department, in our townwide emergency operations center, where if we're doing classes, we'll be in here. You notice this back wall has no windows, anything on it, because that's your training wall, so that's where we would have uh, that's where our, our classes would project to, we'd either have a smart screen there or something like that, and then these are all desk, and this would be our emergency operations center or a classroom training room area, so there's three different uses.
And how often are firefighters required to train?
Constantly, we train, as if you, as you, you know, I send you a report every, uh, every month with all the training hours we do. Uh, many of those training hours are practical, including stuff in, that we would currently use the tower for, stuff that we would do external to the buildings. Many of those classes, especially all of our monthly emergency, emergency medical training are all done in our uh, in in this training room, those are all classroom uh, that are done either in person or remotely, depending on who's teaching it. Uh, any ongoing professional developments done through there, so we train monthly. Uh, actually, we train daily, but um, easily every month, we have at least one or two classes, sometimes three or four, that are done in this area.
That are, and so those classes are given by outside people, inside people?
By both, both. So we, we have a company we contract with that does all of our E M S training, all of our emergency medical service training, uh, they do uh, trainings twice a month, and one's in person, one is by Zoom, and we can do those in here. We have, uh, just this week, we have two uh, statewide required statewide protocol uh, trainings that are mandatory for everyone in the department to attend. They'll be done in our training room. Uh, we have, uh, when the captains do training all the time, we do simulation training, we put uh, through software we've gotten from, from a few grants, or they'll, they'll be in this room and they'll, they'll throw a drawing up and they'll say, okay, uh, how, well, how are we gonna fight this fire? Or they'll use their projector and they'll put a picture up of a residential structure on one of the streets and say, okay, that's assumed there's a fire in this building, well, what are we gonna do? Those are all done in this room here.
Wow, that's interesting, thank you for that, that's, um, that's actually great. So, um, my next question is about the wall. Between the, the, so at its narrowest point between the building and the wall, how many feet is it? And I, yeah, you could maybe show us where the narrowest point is.
The narrowest point, I'm gonna assume it'd be on this side. Okay? It'd be on this side, and again, this was changed, remember, so it's, so it now looks like this. And I think and I don't think it's on here, I think that would be right in this area right here, that's the only area that would be narrow. And that I think is about twenty-four feet, maybe thirty feet in that area.
So this is, this is for me, and I would imagine for many people, difficult to visualize the relationship of the wall to the landscape and the building. Will we be getting a three D model of the whole project?
All the, when you, when you say three D model, so all of the, all of the models we've utilized in design review are three D models. Okay, if you're talking about a hard model that is actually like a something that you'll see in TV shows that they create, that is not part of the scope, that would cost a significant amount of money to do something like that, if that's something that the town decides to do, that is something we would have to approach the uh, the fire station building committee would have to approach the architects and discuss something, that's what you're talking about.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that, that's, that is not part of a, of a typical um, planned development like this.
Interesting.
Yeah, those, those haven't been used in, in many years, except for some very, very large project skyscrapers and things like that, I've seen them used. I mean, we could, we could ask for what the cost would be, but I.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, I mean, this is one of the largest projects we're doing in town, so, um.
I, I, we will get, and we have continued to receive, um, you know, three D renderings, which are very helpful. It's possible that they might be able to do a, a three D animation towards the end. Um, some architects will do that because they've generated enough three D material that it wouldn't cost them anything extra, I don't know definitively that we can, but sometimes that's useful for understanding.
When, when we had reached out earlier, when there was a, a, initially a, an ask for, uh, the amount was significant, that they, well, somewhere around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, at this stage, definitely, because there's, we need to create a lot of work to do that, sometimes during the end, um, they've got enough.
And, and I just have one last comment, um. I think the sign that you put up on the property is a great idea to inform the, the residents and, you know, indicate the Q R code where they can get more information.
On the property, yeah.
Sorry?
That Q R code, I got you.
Right.
Yep.
Did I misspeak?
No, no, you said the sign on the property, I was thinking of the sign that we had talked about for the fire station building committee.
Oh, no, 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 the, the sign that says the fire station project.
Yep.
And so, um, I have to tell you that a few people I've spoken to have interpreted that sign to be that, that the project has already been approved. So if there's a way that you could indicate on the sign that this will be going to town meeting, and it's at this stage, you know, still a proposal, I think that that would be very informative.
Yeah, I, I, you know, Julianne, I don't know if that's because of the sign, because I'm gonna be very honest with you. Probably, I, I can't tell you how many times my guys have come in or I've been approached, hey, when's that, that station that we approved, when's that gonna be built? So it's not because of the sign, it was as well before the sign went up, there's just an assumption that the station's already been approved and it's gonna be built. Got nothing to do with this.
Yeah, so, so we have to start educating the public that there's gonna be a, you know, a town meeting coming up for this and many other meetings that they can attend, so if you could
That's why that.
Put that information on the sign, that'd be great.
I, I don't know what we could do, but yeah, I, we, the fire station building committee can discuss it. Uh, the sign that went up there was approved by the fire station building committee, if they have something they wanna add, we, we can try and figure out a way to add it to it, but I don't know what we would add.
Well, something like, you know, proposed fire station project or something like that.
Yeah, if we were to redo the signs, it would cost us to, so those signs that I put up, it's about two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars, just for those signs. So we could redo the signs, or we could have another sign that's done, that's done up and would go below that sign. But uh, I'll bring it up with the fire station building committee and we can see what they, what they wanna do, we'd be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Lisa.
So, uh, I forgot to ask this question before, when you were talking about the um, the base, that you have the batter work on the base with a price, or batter wall, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
What is, what does base mean? Is it the base price, is it?
The base, so the base price, meaning what's built into that lower number on the prices that I showed you, is this wall, is, I'm sorry, is this wall. That's the base price, where it went from forty-three to get up towards a forty-nine. This is one of the alternatives, and that was two hundred and six, whatever, two hundred and sixty thousand more to do this wall.
All right, so the second, the second one was two hundred and some odd more.
Two hundred and sixty thousand, I think, or sixty-nine thousand, this wall was six hundred and sixteen thousand more to do this wall off the base price, that's what drove that up towards the, when you're starting to get up to that forty-nine point, whatever million.
Okay, so there's a base price and this is added to that base price?
If we wish to go with this, with anything besides this wall, there's an increase.
And what does that, what does that batter wall include? Does that include the preparation of the land, does it include the stone, does it include the fence?
It includes, the, the fence is separate, because the fence would go in under, that, that's a separate area, separate thing. The battered wall, the increase there from what I can understand is in the stone, the preparation, the land removal, because there's more land that has to come, come, come out. Uh, the terrace option, so there's a little bit, there's more labor and there's more material.
Okay, so it's the whole, the whole thing? And then, and then do you have the same problem with, that you have with the brick, is that you don't know what the material is going to actually be?
Yeah, Lisa, believe it or not, because we, we talked about that, we said, well, can we, can we show anyone what the wall's gonna look like, and they said, well, we can show them what we're proposing, but the problem is, you have three different wall companies that come in. Wall company one says this, and this is as close as we can get to that, because that's what our supplier gives us. Wall company two says this, and wall company three says that. And again, based on mass general law, we have to go with, we go with, we have to go with the lowest bid.
Of the material?
Of the, not the material, of the lowest bid. So if the lowest bid is a guy that comes in and says, this is the wall I'm using, that's the wall that we get.
Okay, but that, that, that's in the inclusion of the batter wall though, right?
Yeah, so first thing, we, if we say, we want a batter wall and we want it off white, and he comes in, and one has a cream one, and one has a, I don't know, a snowflake one, and one has a, what's another white color? Ivory, thank you, an ivory one, and the ivory one is the low bid, the ivory ones we get. Now, if someone comes in with a red wall versus a white wall, that doesn't match anywhere near the spec, that's a different animal.
Okay. And where, and do you stockpile, do they stockpile this for you after you order it? So it's all the same.
We don't, we don't do the ordering, the town does not do that ordering, we, we hire a general contractor, and the general contractor does the ordering, they will, the, the bid specs will, will say uh, something like, you know, such and such a company, red number four, I'm making that up, uh, or equivalent. The bidder can, if they wanted to, say, yeah, we're gonna use that, that same company, red number four. Or they can say, oh, some other company is red number seven, that's close enough. And unless we can prove that it's dramatically different, if that's what they, they've proposed, we have to accept it.
But Lisa, in, in answer to your stockpiling question, part of the design would say, the whole wall is the same color. You can't use one color for this part of the wall, one color for this part of the wall, one color for that part of the wall, that's not an option.
Right, right, so the dialogue question always comes in in materials, because if they, if the, the man who was ordering it bought it from three different places and the, and the mill wasn't the same place, you could have three different colors of the same number seven.
Great question, that's where the owner's project manager comes into place. So the owner's project manager is not the architect, that's who we hire, the town pays them to oversee the project to make sure that that doesn't happen. The owner's project manager says, no, 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 your bid said this, that's not acceptable. It all has to be the, I apologize, I'm trying to, trying to point at the same time, it all has to be the same color.
All right, thank you.
Questions, Laura?
Mine's not, mine's not really, excuse me, a design related question, but more the cost of this, the feedback that I've gotten is the, the number was a lot higher than folks had anticipated. And now that we have a number to look at, can you help me understand what the financing is gonna look like and what the cost per, you know, per taxpayer is going to look like, how can we get that information? Because I think there's a lot of concern, and we do need several votes for this project to be approved. It would be helpful to know what the numbers are, like, out of the gate, I'm concerned about these really big projects.
So a, at this point in time, the answer, Laura, is no, because we don't have a number. So a, at this point in time, the answer, Laura, is no, because we don't have a number. We, we, we don't have, we, we have a range from forty-three to forty-nine, and even that forty-three could go down some, we, we, we don't know. Um, and I, and we would be remiss as a fire station building committee, and Mitch, you can jump in here, is that if we try to say, this is the effect it's gonna have, we don't know at this point in time, but that's the reason, that's the reason we do the bidding before we go to town meeting, so we can tell you, this is a number, a do not surpass number. That do not surpass number is the top number.
So right now, um, if I could, Jason Little would be the one to, to drive that, the answer to that, that process. And right now, obviously, he's very, very busy preparing for town meeting. At some point after town meeting, we can ask him to provide some input there and, and that's something that, you know, he would, he would go to bonding people and get an official estimate based on, you know, current ranges, market rates and things like that, um, for some, for some number or two use. I think it's probably preliminary to do that anyway, given that we're still making some big decisions that have substantive impact on the total cost, so that would also be substantive impact on the taxpayer cost. We will know that. We would be completely irresponsible if we went to town meeting without that number. We will definitely have that. It is too early to do that right now.
I guess it's just surprising to me that we're this far down the path and don't have a better idea of the financial impact. It's just, the, the cost of it was really shocking to me, and I just, my concern comes down to how this is gonna impact the taxpayers. And I realize that the range, it would be helpful to know, like, in the middle of that range, this is what the tax is gonna look like. The same way that you're, you know, anticipating the cost. I understand that there is, you can't pinpoint it exactly, but it would be good to know the range of what that would look like.
Jason, I see you volunteered yourself.
Oh, yeah, um, thanks to the chair. I, I know, um, you know, it's, it's, it's still preliminary and we don't know the exact cost, but I mean, we're, we're in kind of a bandwidth where it is a huge ticket item, forty-five million dollars, and between forty-three and forty-nine million dollars. I know, um, we've, we've modeled this, like, the expense of what the prior estimates were in the past through the financial trend monitoring. We typically have that meeting in, in December every year. Obviously, um, that didn't happen this year, but I, again, putting these numbers together for the budget for twenty-five, my hope is to put together some five-year projections going forward for, um, what our debt's gonna look like in the future with some of these big projects that are stacking up. Um, I don't know if people are paying attention through the, the, and, and again, I'll get to this during the budget update, and I, I don't mean to, to put, you know, go out on a tangent with this question, but, I mean, if you, if you run some very simple numbers, if you take forty-five million dollars over, over thirty years, then that, you know, that's, you know, a million and a half dollars in principal every year for thirty years. So a million and a half dollars plus, um, you know, of, our, the bond rates right now, long-term bond rates are about four percent, which is a pretty, pretty high rate. So hopefully around, coming around to the fall, those will go down and it'll be a, a, a better, better projection. But, I mean, if you run those numbers, I mean, to an average taxpayer, three million extra dollars in the, in the tax base is about five hundred dollars. It's about four hundred and seventy dollars. I mean, if that, if that helps. Answer, answer your question a, at, at the moment. So, a, again, it's a very broad question, very rough numbers, but that, that's what the impact would be.
No, that was really helpful, Jason, and I thank you so much for chiming in. And I, I meant to, yeah, oh, and I just meant to preface, this is, you know, I, I, if there's one piece of feedback that has come back unanimously, is that there's no doubt that the firefighters need a new station. And I just, I'm trying to, to, don't take my comment as anything more than just a dollar, and says there's no doubt about the need for it. It's not a question of the need, it's just more the, the finances behind it. But I really appreciate your feedback on that, Jason, so thank you for chiming in.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Thanks, Jason. Questions or comments? Of course, we'll have, um, many opportunities in the future to, uh, to get updates from the fire station building committee, um, before this board takes any, uh, any formal votes on the process in, you know, probably the, the August and September timeframe. Okay, not seeing any other hands up. Um, I think we're done with this item. Uh, Chief Don, thank you very, very much for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, we do have, okay, I just got a hand up from the audience, Pat McManus. Pat, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Uh, Pat McManus, twenty-five Fernbrook Road. Um, as most of you know, full disclosure, I am a member of the fire department, I'm a captain. Um, and I also serve as the union president representing the career members of the department. And I just wanted to offer the, the firefighter's perspective on this project and where it sits. Um, the, the chief said it, um, we're approached all the time when we're out on the street. Or the guys who live in town at the coffee shop, asking about what's going on with the project. There's some out there that think that it's already a done deal and it's moving forward. Um, but we, we continue to get, um, those questions asked. The, uh, the design committee has done a fantastic job, um, keeping us in the loop as, as members of the department, taking, um, our input, uh, as this moves forward. Um, one of the questions we get asked all the time out on the street is, is this building gonna work for us? And I can tell you unequivocally that the design that has been shown to you tonight and that has been progressing absolutely works for us now and the future. Um, none of us know what the future holds, but, um, based on the building we're working out of now, this building is definitely designed for the future. Um, so I just, I just wanted to, to put it out there that, you know, that, the firefighters are, are, they're on board with this project. Um, we appreciate the fact that almost every meeting, it's mentioned that, uh, firefighter health and safety is, is paramount. Um, that's obviously my concern, um, as, as the union president and as one of the end users. Um, and the only request we, we really have, um, as firefight is, is that the boards and committees keep this project on track, get it to town meeting, hopefully get it to an election and put it in the taxpayer's hand, because that's where it belongs. Um, that's all really I have. I just wanted to offer a firefighter's perspective that, uh, that, you know, we, we all appreciate the effort being put into this and, um, the attention that's being given to firefighter health and safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I actually say something before we switch, just quick? Um, because you know I'm not running for reelection and I don't know if I'll be here to vote for this. Um, but I do, I'm just gonna throw it out there, Jason and Scott didn't do this last year, um, but I wholeheartedly support this project and I really hope it passes. If it just passes the select board, because I really feel like, like Pat said, um, Pat and I are buddies on Facebook. He evidently doesn't like it when my cat walks across the screen, so I kicked the cat off the desk today in honor of him, because we were talking about the fire station. But anyway, um, so I really think it's important for, um, it to be in the hands of the people who will be paying the bill and not have it get stopped here. And it does need, what is that called? The super majority or whatever?
Four, four fifths, four, four or five of us need to, um, vote in favor to put it on the ballot.
Just get it on the ballot, and then the voters do what the voters do. So, anyway, that's my little spiel in case I don't get to make another spiel. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Um, we have another hand up in the audience, uh, Michael Tejin. Michael, if you could unmute, identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind, please.
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, hi, Mike Tejin, uh, thirty, um, Oger Avenue. Um, trying to say it correctly, not Auger, but Oger. Uh, yeah, I just, um, uh, a, a comment and a question. Um, Chief, I, I, I like the idea of moving or, or having, uh, like, uh, as you said, the nine eleven memorial, um, or a, uh, memorial in front of the building. Um, I was just wondering, uh, and not to sort of create another expensive alternate to the plan, um, but, uh, maybe consideration of, of maybe leaving what the Boy Scouts did, um, where it is and, and maybe having something, um, newer, uh, in front of the building. Um, I know the, the Port Authority, uh, had a program where you could request, like, you know, even small artifacts from, from ground zero. Um, I think something like that would be pretty, uh, pretty powerful, um, you know, in the front to remember the three hundred and forty-three firefighters and sixty, uh, Port Authority in New York City, uh, police officers who died on, on nine eleven. So, just a, just a comment there. Um, and then a question regarding, uh, the, the wall, uh, not to continue to harp on the wall too much, but, um, the, the extra, say, three hundred thousand for the battered wall. Um, what, what are you getting for that three hundred thousand? Was it just the aesthetics of, of it pushing back farther? Or was there some functional or structural, um, importance to, to doing that and, and having that extra cost?
There's, there's really two things that occur with the batter wall. First thing is, we don't have to worry about the GeoGrid because of the way, in the back wall. The sidewalls are still gonna need it, because the sidewalls are still gonna be straight. So you don't have to worry about the GeoGrid. And the only other thing is that it actually changes the aesthetics, changes the way it looks, gives you a nice gradient heading up backwards instead of a flat wall to stare at.
Okay, uh, but structurally, you would assume both wall, you know, that, there, there's no advantage structurally or longevity-wise of doing one over, over the other.
No, I wonder if there's, i- i- this, this would be a question for our architects. I'm not, not going to imply an answer to this. Is with the GeoGrid as a fabric material that gets put in, and, and we need that for the straight wall, um, the, the base, the base price, and we don't need that for the battered wall. And I wonder if that fabric breaks down over time and may lead to something that might require some, you know, some large scale maintenance down the road. And, and I'm, again, not implying an answer to that, to just a question.
Mike, in, in response to your, your question about the artifacts, uh, you're very, you, you're, you're correct, but I think they're just, they're all gone. Um, I know some, uh, for a while, a lot of departments were getting pieces of steel and putting them out in front as, as part of the, uh, of their memorials. The reason we, we, we talked about moving the scout wall was because we, and if you watch the video where they dedicated it, there was a lot of emotion with that video, and there was a lot of, and Don could speak to it, she was there, and we just thought that was such a, a great piece of history for the town. So not only were we moving the memorial, but we'd be moving the history with it. And we just thought that was, that was kinda neat, but I completely understand your, your comments with it.
Yeah, and we're, we're seeking input from both the, the scout that led this project as an Eagle Scout project, as well as the troop involved that, uh, that did some of the, the groundwork around it, um, you know, before we make a final decision on that.
And just a quick, uh, the, the lovely, um, DPW director, who's a buddy of mine, said, just sent me a text that it's a seventy-five year life on the, uh, GeoGrid.
Okay, good, alright, so, not a problem for seventy-five years, that's good.
Well, not for me, anybody, uh, thanks, guys.
Mike, thank you very much for the, yeah, the input.
Thank you.
Laura?
I have one more question. You reminded me. I think I heard something about geothermal heat. Is that what we're dealing with, some of the side effects of the senior center geothermal heat?
I, I can answer that. So the senior center has a geothermal, uh, HVAC system. It's what's called an open-loop system, and in an open-loop geothermal system, there are, are pipes from the building that go, I don't know, down twenty or thirty feet, and then return or pull in groundwater. Um, might even go, that might, actually, the hose might go down probably a couple hundred feet. But anyway, it pulls in groundwater, including all the silt and sand that goes with it. All that silt and sand goes through all the pumps and everything else, and that's expelled back the other side, and much of the problem to the senior center's geothermal system. And I want to thank, um, our, our facilities director, Sean, for, uh, for teaching me all this stuff, is that all that silt and sand builds up over time. And at the senior center, um, in the past, before we had a facilities director, the maintenance, the preventive maintenance really wasn't what it should be. Um, all modern geothermal systems in New England are what are called closed-loop geothermal systems. In a closed-loop geothermal system, there is a pipe that runs continuously. So it never pulls in the groundwater. It has, um, uh, I think it's like an antifreeze type of material that is in the pipes, that gets sent in the pipe, in a pipe that goes deep into the ground, gets cooled or heated by the ground, and then they, that same, in that same stream comes back up and then heats or cools the building. Uh, and so it would not have the same type of issues that the senior center open-loop geothermal system does. Does that answer that question?
It does, but I just would like to avoid future challenges, the more to what the senior center.
Yeah, I, I agree, that's, that's been a question that we've received, um, from a number of people, for, for that exact reason.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Any other questions or comments before we let the chief and Don go? Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Yep, um, and I, I will add that if anyone in the public has, uh, has questions or comments on this, um, they should go to, um, uh, the Fire Station Building Committee project page, just go to the town website and search for committees and Fire Station Building Committee, or go to the fire department, and there's a page there, it's all the same information. Has a lot of detail, has all the designs, uh, that have been shared thus far, um, has all the presentations that have been shared thus far, links to the meeting videos, and has, uh, an email address that you can use to, uh, to send in questions or, or input and feedback to the committee. Um, alright, next on our agenda, finance director, update on the FY twenty-five budget process and status of FY twenty-four budget. Jason, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm gonna try to share my screen. I've got a, a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to try to load up, get going. Alright, how's that look?
We see your, your presentation side screen, so we see the current slide and the next slide. That's certainly fine.
Um, I, let's see.
Here we go.
There, does that look better?
That's perfect.
Alright, great. Alright, so, um, let me move on to the next slide. Alright, so this, my, my intent was to, um, prepare, give you a brief update on, in, in an overview of where we are with the, the FY twenty-five budget. Um, as you know, um, there's been a number of personnel changes in town, and the administrator's office and with finance and so forth. So we're behind an ideal schedule, and that, that's, um, I think everybody knows that. Um, so at this point, we started working on these budgets, starting in January, um, in mid-January. So from, from that point until now, um, the administration, as long as, as, as well as myself, has met with all the town departments, including the schools as well, um, to review their budget requests. So, um, between now and the, the appropriations committee meetings, we've, we've already been holding appropriations meetings and, and, um, viewing the budgets, requests from town departments and, um, capital requests as well through the financial planning committee. Uh, so we're gonna continue in updating these models as we go. Um, and the, the end goal is to be finished by the final budget hearing, which is March twenty-fifth. Um, this, it's a, it's, that's the usual cycle. We're, um, doing what should be a process that takes months over weeks and days. So, um, again, we always end for March twenty-fifth and we shoot for it, but usually we start a lot earlier. Um, and then, um, that budget will be, um, voted on at annual town meeting on April twenty-second, so that those are the, the end goals in mind. Um, so, back to FY twenty-four on the agenda, says, I'm gonna provide a brief update to FY twenty-four. These are just some basic demographics about the town, um, the population, the average home, current average home value in FY twenty-four, what the average tax bill is, the, the total property value, that's our tax base, that all of the spending decisions get spread over. This, this four-point-three billion, billion-dollar tax base for the town. Um, we have a single tax rate, and this is the makeup of residential and commercial industrial personal property. Um, so residential seventy-three percent, and our bond rating, it's, uh, we, we go through the credit rating agency Moody's, and we're a double A-one. And so, uh, comparing ourselves to some of our surrounding communities, I, I know, um, we'll probably do that a number of times throughout this process, but, uh, it's important to know where we are without, what's happening here is not happening in a vacuum, that, you know, that, that, the effect of the, the spending decisions here. That the effect of the the spending decisions here are local. But they're also within the context of the state and within um our neighbors. So. If you if you look through here, there's some demographics about the our our close neighbors, uh the populations, the um. Average single-family home value for each town. Um the per capita income from DOR data for each town and then the uh FY twenty-four tax bill. The for the, for that single-family home. And um there's a measure of tax effort, that's the um the tax bill versus the per capita income. And um it's it's just an interesting um statistic to look at when when you look at that in comparison to to other towns. Um, and then lastly is this statewide ranking, this twenty-twenty-three rank. Uh twenty-twenty-four's numbers weren't available, but uh these don't change that drastically from year to year, but it it tells you basically. Where this town, where Northborough falls within the, within the three hundred fifty-one cities and towns of the state. So um having a a higher number means you have a lower tax bill relative to everybody else. And having a a lower number means you have a higher tax bill. So currently in twenty-twenty-three, Northborough has the. Seventieth highest uh tax, tax bill, average tax bill in the state. Um, as opposed to Grafton, which has the eighty-second, and Westboro is the. Our next uh neighbor and they're thirty-sixth in the state. So um like I said, this doesn't change drastically year to year. This next table may be hard to see on the screen. It's a, it's a lot of uh, lot of lines, but um. This is the, that statewide ranking plotted for for a number of years going backwards. So this black line in the middle that's hovering around the sixty is Northborough. So what the, what that's showing is that Northborough's tax bill has been falling in relation to every, to to the rest of the state. Because we were in the um in the fifties and then we crossed the line back into the sixties and are now at seventy. Um, and then uh we've traditionally always had a lower tax bill in Southborough and Westborough. Those are the top numbers. And then traditionally, all all of the rest of our neighbors are, have have um lower tax bills statistically than us. So um it's just an interesting um graphic to look at in my, in my opinion. Um, I didn't want to spend too much time on it. All right, so getting into the FY twenty-five budget and in our outlook. We continue to face uh, you know, national and and um state economic uncertainty. Are um, I just was talking about the the bond rates, uh the bond rates are are higher than. Higher than we've seen in a long time um for for us to borrowing money. At the same time, we're um having um historic investment income on money on our our bank accounts that. That um defray the cost of town government. Um so anyway, so in this forecast. The gu- we have the governor's budget, our local aid increases one point four six percent. So. If if you know how the town budgets work, typically they go up somewhere between three to four percent a year. Or that's, that's a common um, common request. So a one point four six percent means that as time goes on. Greater reliance be- becomes on the, on the taxpayer and the and the tax base. Um, and again, there's challenges to maintain level services, the school budget requests, including all of them together, including the regional assessments. Those are, those came in at five and a half percent. Um, and then fixed costs carried in the town budget were all going up. We were facing at the beginning of this um being told. Performance within the health insurance plan was uh, we were gonna look at the ten percent renewal rates for the, for the health insurance. The pension that is on a a plan to get fully funded, the Worcester, we're part of the multi-employer Worcester Regional Retirement System, so. As you know, you hear about this every year, but the the retirement system's making up for its shortfalls and funding from from the past. Um, so to get to fully funded, there's a legislative um deadline of twenty forty. For the pension system to be fully funded. They're on a a a target to be fully funded by twenty thirty-six. So what that means for us is that we're likely gonna face a a ten percent or or more assessment increase every year in the in the pension plan. And I again, that's to cover the 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 shortfall in funding for the, for the pension system. And then this year as well, um due to um changes in the, in the, the trucking contract. The pay-as-you-thrown subsidy is um proposed to to go up as well. So all of the town departments are facing some of the same conditions within them. Um uh inflation and then pent-up needs and within the departments uh over constrained budgets. Um, so we've, we've met with all the departments and um. Gone back and forth with their budgets and we're gonna continue doing so and probably up until the the deadline on the the twenty-fifth or twenty-fourth. Um. So again, going through this exercise, typically at the start of when we, when we put together a a budget, it's revenue driven. So we'll, we'll start by looking at new revenues. And new revenues are the proposition two and a half increase and and anything else coming into the budget. And then the new revenue typically in the past has been used in a budget model to kind of talk to. The schools and say, okay, if we had parity between the town and the schools, what could budgets go up? It in the year. So basically, that number would have been um two point five million dollars. So again. The proposition two and a half increase, it's one point six million dollars. That's typically what we are allowed to raise taxes every year on. On the tax base. Plus new growth, um we're estimating thirty million dollars of new um tax-based value coming in. Um for four hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, so that that's two million dollars. The state aid, um the governor's budget, the one point four six percent adds another eighty-seven thousand dollars. So if you look at the magnitude of the state aid, really, that's not a very um meaningful number in comparison with, uh you know, to a, to an eighty million dollar budget. And then um, like I said, we've had increased investment income, so we're, we're increasing the. Hopefully, um again, for the investment income, our bank account interest won't fall off the cliff if, I mean, hopefully. Interest rates go down for the, for bonding purposes, but hopefully they don't fall off the cliff with our investment income estimates. So again, total new revenue under this exercise would have been two and a half million dollars. So um. The current budget model has us, we have. Currently have unused levy capacity. That means that we haven't taxed to the max based on the proposition two and a half levy capacity. That we have under the law. So we have four million dollars of unused levy capacity that carried over from the prior year. So the budget that we're working with now is proposing using two million dollars of that. Um to to balance the budget. Then um some of the other sources of of funds in the, on the revenue side are uh transfers. Those are, if you have been to town meeting, you see in Article Four, the town's budget article, there's a. A bunch of numbers that get transferred from fire department revolving, cable receipts reserved. So so those are proposed to be nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. And again, the biggest number is um the three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars that we would transfer out of the. Fire department's revolving account. Second biggest number is the the cable receipts reserved, and these are. This this three hundred thirteen thousand dollars isn't just coming into the general fund. That's I. Um, that's, that's exactly the the cable budget that's been submitted. It's three hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Um, and then recreation and then everything else is uh a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. So. The, then um the last source for funding the budget on the revenue side is fund balance or free cash. And um we had uh at the close of last year, we had three point six million dollars certified by the state. So um the budget plan this year is to use three million of, three point one million of that. And what that does is funds this, the um capital improvement plan, the um appropriations reserve fund. This uh transfer to stabilization. Um and then applies a five hundred thousand dollars to the operating budget, which is the, within the fiscal policies of the town. Um, and then it leaves five hundred thousand dollars remaining in reserves. Then um one other unique piece of um funding that we have this year is the assessors met and declared six hundred thousand dollars. Um, of the overlay balance um surplus, and that's been proposed to be used for the capital plan. As a, as a one-time revenue to apply to one-time costs. So how does that look? This is our current budget model. I know these are, I know this is gonna be a very um number-driven presentation. But this is what the total budget model looks like. So the, there's not too many sources, but it's broken out with a lot of numbers here. Um, tax receipts, sixty-five million dollars, state aid, six million dollars. Um, free cash, three point one million dollars, overlay surplus, six hundred thousand dollars. Our local receipts, four point four million, then the other funds, and that adds up to just shy of eighty million dollars. And that's a, and that represents an eight percent increase over the the prior year. So um getting into the requests, um. When we came to this, most of the school budgets had already been approved, so we we're just plugging in and listening to the the school presentations. And um, and and plugging these into our our models. Um, the K to eight school departments propose to go up three point nine nine percent. Um. That's uh one, the magnitude of that's one point one million dollars. The Algonquin assessments, which include the um, they have a capital assessment as part of, a pay-as-you-go capital assessment as part of their assessment this year. Um, they um, the Adren project, six hundred forty-five thousand dollars. And some of, all these details are kind of broken out down below. But uh we also are gonna face debt service for the um complex project that they, that got approved last year. So that's gonna be about a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars and um. So overall, that assessment's going up seven point nine seven percent while their operating costs within that are only going up five percent. And then um, ASVET's assessments are going up a net total of. A hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, and that that's twelve percent, which is a huge percentage increase, but um because. We only have sixty-nine students going there, that it's a much lower number compared to everything else. So I mean, if you were to um. Match this, this exercise that I talked about at the start, where we would look at new revenues and compare to to the school requests. Basically, all of the, all of the new revenues would be um consumed by the, by the um school requests. At at five point five two percent. But um. Cause we're not going through this in order exactly. The town departments, the the town fixed costs are increasing. Um, as it stands, the ten percent health insurance increase. Has been tempered down to an eight percent renewal, that's likely. And um, we really look closely at the roster this year, because I I don't know if you remember, but a big part of why we had. A big turnback last year from health insurance was just the number of vacancies that we had on on the town side and. No, a lot of, lot in public safety, but um a lot of the people that had health insurance and left. Their replacements may not have taken it, or they may have been an extended vacancy. Um, we've had. We had approximately nine hundred thousand dollars in turnback, so we cut, we trimmed that back, so. We're now at a four and a half percent, four point four percent increase in health insurance. So that fixed cost is um looking to be about two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars of an increase over the prior year. The Worcester Regional Assessment that I was talking about. Um, the system-wide, it's a multi-employer plan, and we're rated actuarially based on our people that participate in the plan. So it's based on our salaries and our contributions that go into the plan. And um. The system is not gonna raise their overall assessment more than ten percent, and that's why I said we're gonna face at least a ten percent or probably around a ten percent. But our individual results will vary based on the actuarial results that that the system gets. Um, so we are at eleven point two percent this year, and the magnitude of that's three hundred fifteen thousand dollars. And next, I mentioned the the solid waste subsidy to balance the solid waste budget. That's gonna to require an increase of two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, and that's typically born within what's considered the town budget. Um, and then everything else was just forty-nine thousand dollars for for fixed costs. So that's a a total of um an eight percent increase approximately, and that was eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And then um. Next, looking at are the town departments, all the town departments have requested budget increases as well. And uh those totaled uh one point one million dollars. So overall, the town's budget increase was one. Two, about approximately two million dollars. So going through this, what's within the town's budget? Like I, like I said at the start of it. Um, we were hearing pent-up requests, I mean, pent-up demands within budgets. And um these were the town administrators' priorities as as we moved through these budget requests. Um, and this is just a tabulation of the cost of of, there's, there's a few new positions that are being proposed. And uh these are the costs that are tabulated here. So the new positions that um were being requested are um. A. Plus one patrolman for the police department, and that the magnitude of that's, that's um eighty thousand. We, the uh, the police chief has proposed changing the. The the structure of within his department for the upper ranks, so between, he's gonna reduce a sergeant, add a lieutenant. And the differential within the budget looks like it's about twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, there's the town accountant's position that's proposed because um. That, that's my position, but it's also combined with finance director, and there's been the proposal to um segregate both positions. So this is simply the uh where the position is classified, the the midpoint of of the. Of the um, the the compensation scale for town accountant's position. Uh, there's a part-time town clerk position that's been proposed at twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, DPW has an additional administrative assistant within their budget. Uh, it's fifty percent funded by the enterprise fund. That's, it's that, and the general fund's exposure would be thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, an assistant library director has been proposed to be brought back um. Way back when, there's, there's a long history of cuts that were made to the library, and some of these are being proposed to be brought back. There was um. A transition for some part-time staff to make them full-time. And that was over a multiple-year plan with funding from the trustees, that they were gonna use trust funds to. Offset this, and the cost of doing that for this year, it looks like the incremental cost was about thirteen thousand dollars. And then for the um, for the five employees, four and a half exposed to the general fund. Um, the cost of family health insurance plans, because we don't know what what these people would enroll in. Is ninety-seven thousand dollars, so that's a total of of the town's two million dollar requests, approximately four hundred sixty-two thousands. Related to the, the, the new staff being proposed. So similar to the revenue table, this is balanced to to the the expenditures. So this is just how they play out. Town seven point eight two, the school totals, five point five two. Um. The use of free cash within the budget for the reserve fund, transfer to stabilization, the overlay surplus being used. Ap- applied to the capital plan, free cash being applied to the capital plan. We've proposed um continuing the the OPEB trust funding. And um, we have debt ex- debt excluded debt service, the other funds that offset the town's budget. And then that's a a similar number to above, it's balanced, that's the good news. So um, that's the. Where we are with the budget model at the moment. Um. So again, I just wanna briefly go through the capital plan. As I mentioned before, we've been meeting with the Financial Planning Committee. Uh and vetting the, the uh capital requests. So the total capital request that came through uh um to financial planning this year are um. And this isn't counting the forty-five million dollar fire station, but was five point four million dollars. So what was that for? Um, police department is proposing two cruisers. Uh they're on an annual replacement plan for two or three cruisers, so this year it's a hundred forty thousand dollars for two cruisers. Um, the fire department is looking to replace its rescue pumper, and the cost for that equipment is one point two five million dollars. Um, there's three projects within the DPW facilities um division. There's five articles within DPW Highway for vehicles and so forth at one point seven million. The water sewer funds have two articles totaling five hundred twenty thousand dollars. And then the K to eight school department has a a few articles and um, which include um the Peaslee feasibility. Borrowing authorization. And again, I should make the caveat that. Again, and and if the school superintendent were here, he would make it clear that there's likely not going to be any expenditure of the nine hundred thousand dollars. Required until FY twenty-six, but simply. But simply, we need to have a a borrowing authorization at this point, and it may not um amount to an expense, but we do need to account for it in the capital plan. And then on top of that, this is already um discussed as part of the numbers, but Algonquin has um, the the school administration has put together a a capital repair program within their budget to um conduct some annual uh pay-as-you-go capital plans with within the high school. So um, the first year of that is being assessed to us through through our regional agreement. And um, we're we're including it in the capital plan, just so that we consider what those projects are and um hearing from the school department, it sounds as though there is going to be at least a five hundred thousand dollar ask every year as part of the their um operating budget to do pay-as-you-go capital um capital replacements and and repairs to the high school. Uh, this year, this um, this encompasses um some lighting controls and heating repairs, and that's the two hundred forty-two thousand dollars is our estimated share at sixty-one percent, because that's that it's enrollment-driven, is how the the regional agreement works for that. So for the for those five point four million dollar capital requests, this is the funding sources that we propose using, it's the two point two million dollars in free cash. The tax levy for the for the Algonquin assessment. And then um, we've got other funds built into the capital plan. Um, eight hundred eleven thousand dollars, um, that's six hundred thousand dollars from the overlay surplus. Um, a hundred seventy-two thousand dollars is being re-appropriated older articles. So um, one of the facilities projects is a siding project at the police station. And um, it's a two hundred thousand dollar article to side the police station, but it's re-appropriating the the painting article for seventy thousand dollars within that from last year, so that's seventy of this one seventy-two. And then a hundred and two thousand dollars is an old article for um the middle school, which the schools have proposed re-appropriating the balance in that article toward um toward more projects at the middle school. Water revenues and um premium reserves make up the difference. Enterprise free cash is going to pay for um the enterprise articles, and then um borrowing authorizations. The peaslee school is going to be one for nine hundred thousand dollars, and then the uh rescue one, that was just the balance of what was left over and unfunded by all these other sources that we we had had available and and applied, so um that the rescue one was just the biggest ticket item on the capital plan, so that that's why we're we're not picking on the fire station, but it's the fire department by borrowing for their fire truck, but um, it was the biggest ticket item, and it seemed to have the longest life of any of the, any of the the projects, so it'd be the most appropriate to a apply borrowing to it. And okay, so annually, there's a free cash plan presented, um, we have three point six million dollars certified free cash, we're proposing using two point two for the capital plan. Five hundred thousand dollars is being used toward the FY twenty-five operating budget. We're going to propose using a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the Appropriations Committee Reserve Fund. We're going to transfer two hundred thousand dollars to stabilization or propose to, and leave five hundred thousand dollars in reserves. So that, along with our balance and stabilization, we have um a healthy five point seven million dollars in stabilization as of December. So the reserves total six point four million dollars per our definitions. So versus an eighty million dollar budget, that means we're maintaining our reserves at approximately eight percent. And that that's been um an an annual uh amount that we, a target that we shot for every year with preparing these budgets. And um, the fiscal policies are, we'll endeavor to maintain five to ten percent, and it's just in incumbent on us to try to maintain these reserves and to keep our bond rating as as high as possible as we go through this time where we're going to be considering a a lot of um building projects and and projects that require borrowing. And okay, so last slide, I'm going to put it out there, a a prediction for um the average single-family tax bill, um, the budget as presented in in the numbers that I just showed would represent a seven percent increase on the on on taxes or a six hundred twenty-six dollar increase to a six hundred fifty-six thousand dollar um average single-family home in um twenty twenty-five. So in terms of, I I just did a couple of statistics here in consideration of the limits of what it's going to be between, you know, since we're still refining these budget numbers. Um, if the town budget increase wasn't in the the seven point something neighborhood, if it were three and a half percent, so suppose all the town budget requests were zero and level level funded and um only the fixed costs increase. The impact of that would have been three and a half percent town increase based on the fixed costs alone. But um, that would have had a tax impact of five point two percent or four hundred sixty-four dollars. So um by way of comparison, um the initial town budget requests um came in at at eleven percent, and they've basically been trimmed down to seven point nine something um from from the initial eleven percent, so the bandwidth there was whatever we did, it was likely going to fall within this this four hundred sixty-four to seven forty-five number, and that was the point of 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 just including these two numbers, a consideration of what 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 would reasonable bandwidths be for for the increase. And uh, that I I talked a lot, uh, if there's, there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Questions from the board? Lisa?
Uh, a couple. With this slide, um, you have the tax impact for the school, right? Is that SFHA?
Yeah, it's kind of a, uh, it's kind of a um convoluted not, the the set of set of um letters, but it's average single-family home value.
All right, I'm like, what the heck does that mean? Um, okay, so what is it, what is the usual, like, the past, you know, seven years, what is the usual increase percentage-wise on town budgets?
Um, you you mean just in terms of like the average single-family in- increase?
Uh, no, the budget increase, not the, not the, like, the town budget goes up. You know, I mean, every year, everybody comes forward and says, this is what we're going to need. How how has that been for the past seven years?
Uh, it's been, it's been between three and five for the past seven years.
Between three and five. So this basically goes up to seven or eight, is that right?
Yes.
And that's for everybody? Or is the school higher?
No, the the's, the schools in total, the the total of all the assessments with along with the 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 K to eight schools came in at three point nine nine percent, and the the um but every everything together, the 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 Algonquin increase was about eight percent in total. Um, asset bets was a higher percentage, but they're a smaller piece of everything, so in in total, the school increases were five and a half percent. But um, it it's kind of um an arbitrary way that we run this budget model, because we take a a lot of numbers that the town controls per se. But um, there are fixed costs that are also related to the schools as well, so including hel- health insurance. Um, debt, non-non-excluded debt service, obviously, in the excluded debt, we we account for that separately out of the town budget, but the town's budget includes non-excluded debt service, which was a number of the older projects that um were were smaller in scale than the than the debt-excluded projects. So um you know, the town departments are going up about eight percent in this proposal, so it's just kind of um coincidental that it's the same amount as the as the fixed costs.
Okay, so what, what I would ask the next question is, okay, so if we just go with the tax impact being even seven percent, we're six twenty-six now. And we at, we know we have capital projects that are going to have to come up and be done because they've waited too long. So if you're looking at that, and then earlier you said that if the lowest, well a guess of what the the fire station might cost was four hundred and seventy-five? Is that right?
Um, yeah, that that's an estimate based on the the highest year, that would be the first year at the, you know, none of the forty-five million dollars is paid off yet, so if you take forty-five million dollars times four percent plus an inch, a principal payment of a million and a half dollars, that comes out to about four hundred seventy-five dollars.
Okay, and then that, say we already did that, that would be added to the six twenty-six?
Uh, well, that wouldn't be the this in twenty-five, that would be in twenty twenty-six or later. The, because the the debt wouldn't hit immediately for the for the fire station.
Okay, but what I'm saying is it's coming, so even if we, even if six twenty-six is this year's, next year's will be higher. So the the tax impact normally for a a budgeting, with the budget increasing even at at seven percent next year, that's going to go up, tax levy goes up. Um, so then you're going to add whatever that almost five hundred thousand figure to this, to say, I would, I would even go, we just say seven, eight hundred, eight hundred eight hundred dollars per person. Now we're back, now we're into a thousand and thousand some odd dollar increase for everybody, well, I don't know, I could say everybody.
Well, we haven't, we haven't projected, Jason hasn't projected what the FY twenty-six budget will look like, we, I don't even think you've done any requests for that yet. So we don't, we don't know that.
No, I mean, I I my hope is to put together a a similar model as we have in the past, which has has done out years of projections, um, I ha- haven't, I don't have that ready for tonight's meeting, but I mean, to to the point, yes, I mean, whatever, whatever project we do is going to add to the the incremental increases of the operating budget, so there there is, you know, there will be demands going forward, and so to to Li- Lisa's point, she is correct that those would be raised in addition to, the taxes would need to be raised in addition to that, and I mean, it'd be debt done via debt exclusion, so it wouldn't it wouldn't impact the town's ability to um, conduct its operations and and propose operating budget increases, but yeah, you're you are correct that there would be there would be an increase based on on that alone.
Okay, um, hmm, I forgot what the next question was, I was going to ask you, um. Oh, I know what it was, and you may may not have this information. I've, uh, in talking to different people now, that several of our schools have roof problems, leaks, ser- serious leaks. How does, is are any of those addressed in the school's budget? Are they planning to? I know that Melican Schools got, you know, leaks into the small gym, and I know that the, I don't know, three of the other schools have leak roof problems, plus we have some in other municipal buildings. So how much, how much of that could be covered or is planned to be covered in the budget this year for the school that they proposed? Or is that no longer the school's thing? Does that a, does that go into a different kind of fund, since we have, we're moving things over to a a facilities? Fund, does that get included in the facilities, or is that facilities separate?
The the facilities would be town facilities, so the 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 section of our capital budget, which is dedicated to facilities um, on our end is is maintained by the DPW, it's a division of the DPW. Um, and those are all town buildings, um, the school's facility requests are included in our capital plan as well, though, because we do, we do account for all the schools' requests in in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. Um, for roof projects, I I know, like, the Proctor School was one of the most problematic roofs in in recent history, and that was um, ARPA funds were allocated to to deal with that. Other, other roof projects, I know in the Capital Plan Z School has a roof project coming out in the in the near future.
And this board is already
Twenty twenty-seven.
Support to MSBA for that.
Yeah, so I mean, hopefully, we're we're going to be able to leverage some grants for the and share the cost with the state for some of these projects, so yeah, they they are considered as as they're going forward, so you know, the you could re- refer to the the school's uh capital budget.
Okay, but they'll, they have to be added then, they're not, they're not included in that.
Uh, I don't think there's any capital school roofs in the, there there's none in the plan as far as I know this year, they it would just be too large for them to include that in their operating budget, too.
Those are few, those are future projects, so they're not in the FY twenty-five budget.
All right, so that the, because I've heard from several parents now, pictures of what Melican School looks like and the water coming in and ruining the floor in that gym.
Yeah, so the 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 school committee has not made any budget requests for that, so you know, un- unless they do, my assumption is that's something that they can uh take care under their maintenance budget. It's not, i- it that's, that roof is not old enough that it's expected to need to be replaced. Leak that they'll need to deal with, but that's a, that'd be a question for the school department.
All right, well, thank you for, thank you for all that, thank you, Jason, as always.
Jason, that was a really clear presentation that was and I personally like how you kind of round up figures. It's, it makes it even clearer, but um, so with the pandemic, there was COVID relief, there's ARPA, there, and then there was that big infrastructure bill. And I know the state got a big chunk of ARPA that they were dispersing. Is there any money that you know of that we should be or could be applying for?
I'm, I'm not aware of any, I mean, I think we're we're pursuing all of the avenues that we know are available to us, I mean, as things go on, I know we, there is the Lisa was asking me about the the um fair share amendment recently. And I know that funded um I'm pretty sure that's what funded our supplemental appropriation to chapter ninety that we've been asking for in the legislative letter, so that's, that's a response, but in terms of um going after ARPA-funded things on the state level, we may know, not know how the state is choosing to fund grant programs when they offer them to us, they may just come come to us as opportunities to be funded from the state, so um, and I, and again, this is a very small grant, but the 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 one that the senior center received recently for um the um, the telecommunication devices or um, I forgot, um.
Fiber meeting stuff, yeah.
Yeah, 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 for their for their remote meeting stuff, um, that that was uh, i- it came, came through described as ARPA allocation, and it's not our ARPA money, it's the state's money that they chose to distribute out through through a grant program that way. Um, so like I said, we may not know where how how to put all of those things together, but I'm sure that will be presented with opportunities as as they go forward, and everybody's looking to their agencies that they interface with for for those grant opportunities.
Okay, and just one more question, and it, I think it was on slide fourteen, you don't have to show it again, but it said solid waste enterprise fund went up markedly more than the other enterprise funds. What, why is that? Do you know?
Um, well, I I don't have all of the details in front of me, but I know that the the trucking contract had to go out, and there was changes with the you know, there was changes with the recycling market, that was part of the contract, so um I again, I I don't have a a
Tim, Tim will be able to give us more information on that.
There's a good reason for it, but I don't have a, I don't have it at the tip of my tongue.
Okay, thanks so much, I mean, I think we all knew that there were a lot of projects coming down, down the pipe, but um here we are, so we'll do the best we can, right? Thank you.
Sheila and Laura, I think I saw your hand.
Yes, please, Jason, thank you so much for that presentation, I really appreciate how you put it into terms that I can somewhat understand. Um, one comment that I saw is uh, that you said that there's been a lot of pent-up demands for the department. Will this help bring us in line with where they should be, or is this going to be like several years that we're going to have these big bumps in the departmental needs?
For, well, my take is ha- having met with all the departments, with the the new town administrator, and um we we met with with every department head and listened to their needs and the, the there is a a responsiveness to most of them, and I I mean, I would not foresee a large amount of department increases as we go forward, I mean, I I could be wrong, but I think this gets us kind of into territory where um we have more appropriate staffing for the for the level of demands for each of the departments as as we go forward, so there'd be more incremental increases as we go forward, but um I wouldn't see any department coming forward with a big massive um staffing request in in the future. But not not that even four and a half people is is that that big of a staffing increase, but for for here, it has been, since our our levels have remained the same for so long.
I appreciate that, thank you, and then my other quest- I appreciate that, thank you. And then my other question is, and I thank you for all your presentations in the past. Are we financially, I know we didn't do our financial monitoring this year, but from your projections in the past, do you seem to be following? On the same trajectory, or are we way above that, or way about below it? You know, where do we kind of fit in the space? That you anticipated a couple of years ago when you did that presentation.
Um, I, I think we're, I mean, I, I think. I would say that we're, we're this trajectory for tax increases. Has gone up slightly based on just the size of the projects going up. I mean, if, if, if you consider. Or that we were modeling a, a, a twenty-five million dollar fire station last year. And now we're modeling a forty-five million dollar, and just, just by nature of that, and, and I'm not taking away the merits of the program or anything like that. It's just the market conditions that we're in, but um, it's going to be a higher trajectory based on, based on that, based on those added costs, so. Are we fiscally healthy? Yes, I mean, we have, we have reserves that, that meet. You know, what the credit rating agencies would look for. So I, I, I think that, you know, we're fiscally healthy, but that, that. We're close to the, the trajectory that we presented in the past, but it, it has gone up.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. You can make an interpretation that compared to probably the. The two thousand nineteen. Uh, projection, we're probably well below. Right now, because at that point, you had projected that we would have done the fire station project and we'd be in it already. We still haven't done that project, and the project has become more expensive due to the construction inflation. Of, uh, of waiting five years, so that will, that's sort of what, one of the things that's going to push us a little bit higher than. The projection for future years.
Well, was it timing and size increase that impacted that number, though?
There's not much of a size increase to the fire station. The, the retaining wall is new. I think it, it ended up being about a ten or twelve percent increase, a more of a question for, for the building committee. The vast, vast majority is just construction inflation. The cost of construction has just gone way, way up. There are a couple of years in the twenty percent range. And now it's settled back into, you know, seven to ten percent per year. And where it used to always be three and a half to four.
Square footage increased by thirty-six percent.
I'm sorry?
So the square footage increased by, by thirty-six percent?
I have, I have a feeling that's not accurate. We don't, we don't have the, the chief or the, the blueprints in front of us to, uh. To confirm, but my understanding is a twelve percent difference. Maybe looking at gross square foot versus net square foot, one versus the other, your different comparisons.
That was all, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Laura. Any other questions for Jason? Jason, I really appreciate this budget run-through. I think this was a, this was a very good model to follow, uh, very, very clear. With some, some good details, but not maybe too many details. I know you, you present. Uh, more of the gory details to the appropriations committee. We follow those, of course, also, and those are available to anyone to watch online also, so really appreciate that. And as appropriations, uh, works with you and Tim and all the department heads, uh, each week that they have a meeting, by the time we come back. Um, in a couple of weeks for the Budget Public hearing, we'll even have, have some more details of any other decisions that get made between now and then. Um, and we can review that jointly with the Appropriations Committee.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, that concludes that item, and now we're going on to the next item, which is to, to close the town meeting warrant. We did a quick run-through of the warrant at our last regular meeting, and we've received. Some additional drafts since we are now looking at. I mean, the, the draft that we all got this afternoon was sixty-five articles, including reports, and then we received. One petition article that by law must be added, um, so we're now up to sixty-six. Um, I hope we don't have to go through line by line on each of these, but there's certainly an opportunity that if, um, if members of the board have, have. Particular strong questions or opinions about individual articles. We can talk about them, um, keeping in mind that our town administrator couldn't be with us tonight. But, um, you know, we can, we can try to do that, so our process, both, uh, for the, for the board. Diane, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted, I just wanted to note that, um, for the CPC warrant articles, we typically invite. The chair of that committee to present at either the last meeting in March or the. April eighth meeting and also the zoning articles. Will be presented, so just keep that in mind.
We'll have, have opportunities to ask questions to the experts on those.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. So, um, so again, the, the process tonight is today we vote to close the warrant. Once we've closed the warrant, no new articles can be added unless we see an overwhelming need to reopen. And then re-add and re-close the warrant, which in theory we can do. It's not, not normal practice, but it's possible. And then I think on the twenty-fifth at our next regular meeting, which is the same night as the public hearing. Um, we would, uh, sign the warrant and that, uh, that's the schedule, correct? Yeah, um, so, uh, so that, that then completely closes everything, so what we're being asked to approve here. Are the, uh, are the articles not necessarily the language behind the articles that comes with the signing of the warrant? So, uh, our draft has a lot of blank numbers and things like that, as those are being worked through. Uh, and that's a normal part of the process, so. I think what I'll do, anticipating there may be some questions, I'm gonna ask in article range numbers. Does that sound okay to everybody? And then, um, again, because if I start with article one and go one at a time, we'll be here all night. I would say, you know, for, maybe for the first ten articles, articles one through ten. Are there any, any questions or, uh, or items that any board members want to? Want to talk about articles one through ten? Okay, not seeing anything. And I probably should have gone one through eleven, because eleven is. Kind of a, kind of the same, the same type of idea as ten. Um, alright, so eleven through fourteen. Any questions or comments on that?
I think I would go to thirteen, because there may be, there may be discussion wanted on article fourteen.
Yep, yep, I was going to mention something there. Okay, so through thirteen, no, no questions. Article fourteen is senior tax relief, so, um, at our request, uh, uh, Jason has. Proposed some language for increasing a couple of the, um, the thresholds and maximums allowed. There's, uh, there's one, there's a, a, um. Uh, the, the deferral is tied to the, um, circuit breaker amount for, for seniors. The state increases that each year, so we can increase it each year. We increased it last year for the first time in a very, very long time. And, um, and I asked Jason to, um, to, uh, put forward an article to increase it again. It's not a giant dollar amount every year. It goes up just by a few percentage points. Um, my hope is, is that, you know, we just make that a, a standard recurring item. To always keep up with that as opposed to remembering to do it every few years. And, and, uh, the state law passed by, uh, by the governor that, uh, that she spoke about when she came to visit us at the senior center. Allowed a few other threshold increases, which are dealt with there. Any, any particular questions, Lisa, or anyone else? Yeah, you're muted, Lisa. Everyone gets a freebie.
There seems to be some, some activity in the background. So, um, alright, so on fourteen, it was more to get just the general public. When you said passing through. Do you mean for us to add, pass through questions, or when we get to town meeting? Thought it would be a, a good, a good thing to talk about for a second to let people know what was happening with that, so that's.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I, I, I'm asking whether the board has any, any questions or comments on particular articles. Um, before we get to the end and, and consider closing the warrant. So, but yes, if there are particular items that we think need a little bit of explanation for the public, and you know, I. I thought number fourteen did, so that's, that's what I did there, but if there's anything else we wanted to add.
Are we going to be able to put more of, uh, explanations in them? So that people have a better, because we, we wanted to be able to get information out to people before the town meeting. And I think it's really important this year, especially with the increases and everything else that's coming forward, that the more they know, the better it is for them and us. So, um, as long as we have.
Yes. Yeah, we're, well, again, tonight, all we're doing is we're closing the, um, the list of articles in the order. The detail can come later. I think traditionally, the Appropriations Committee writes the commentary that goes in with that with input from. The town administrator and the finance director, but we can certainly add text to anything. Um, for the printing, that's not part of the warrant, that's commentary that goes along with.
Great, thank you.
I was just gonna say, I'm glad that you did that little explanation on that one, and any more communication. On article fourteen is good.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important to do all we can to help seniors, because we, you know, we know. In many regards, they're disproportionately impacted. Um, by some of the taxes that we, that we know are coming. And, you know, the law limits us, we can't do everything we might want to do to help them, but anything we can do, we should make sure that, that we in fact do that. I want to mention article fifteen is a, a placeholder that we may or may not. Act upon or, or pass over a time meeting, but I think it's important to leave in there, and that is. Um, we know that there is on, you know, ongoing discussion with the town of Marlboro regarding, um, sewer processing, if you will. That's subject to executive session, we can't talk about it, the details too openly here. There is a possibility, if we get things resolved, we may, um, we may want to, uh, to deal with that in this regard. Yeah, we, via this article at town meeting, um, if it gets resolved by town meeting, we can do that through this article. If it doesn't get resolved by town meeting. We will do so in some future town meeting. I don't know if anyone else has, has anything on that. Article sixteen is status report from the Fire Station Building Committee. I think the intent was there, and I, I know it is. From the, from the committee to do that at the end of the capital articles rather than beforehand. It's, we're not seeking any funding for the fire station project, we're seeking the opportunity to, uh, give a brief update. To, um, to the voters on the status of the project, so they have a little bit more insight as to what's going on, so I, I think. The appropriate place is at the end of the capital articles, not before. And Laura?
Is it possible to move it either before the meeting? I'm just like looking at this warrant, we're going to be there for a while. Can we move it either before? Town meetings that people can come early for it? Because if we're not going to be voting on it, I'm just wondering if the placement where we're doing so much, it's going to be a long meeting.
My, my expectation, and we talked about it at today's Fire Station Building Committee, is this would be a short presentation. This is not going to, it, it would be much shorter than the presentation we received tonight from the chief. Um, I, I think, I think it should be part of the war, if it's, if it's before, no one's going to know, and no one's going to see it. If it's after. People are going to be, uh, out of the frame of mind of capital projects. So my strong opinion is if, if we're going, if we decide that we don't want to present it, we don't have to present it. But, um, I know, I thought it was a good idea, the chief did, Tim did. So. That's at least my suggestion. Did I see another hand up? Laura, are you all set for now?
I just, my gut is, we should, that, that should have its own meeting, just because. This is going to be a really long night for people that are here for voting on, like.
We, we, I mean, we will certainly have other presentations, other opportunities for public input. Um, I've done these large capital projects before at town meeting. I think it's appropriate to do so, given we are working on, um, a pretty, a, a pretty large project. Town meeting is a, is a good audience to provide that insight to. And my hope is, is it would be, uh, you know, five to at maximum ten-minute presentation, and that would be the end of it. You know, I, I think ultimately that's, that's up to the moderator. I, I don't believe it really needs questions. If the moderator is comfortable, so maybe cap it at a certain number of minutes. There's no action being taken, so we don't need that formal process.
Okay, thank you.
Julian?
I, I have to echo Laura's concerns. I just think that a five to ten-minute presentation. Would be great, but people are going to have a lot of questions, and it's basically the information will be incomplete. If people don't get to ask questions, so I would say at five, five-thirty. The chief has an opportunity to talk to people who are interested in this. Or, but I just, as in the body of the warrant, I. I would have to say, no, I, I, I don't. The chief presented something tonight, and there were just five of us, and, and the conversation was an hour. And we still don't have all the information, so, so I just, I.
The, the intent is to provide a brief progress update. It's not to provide. The different options as to the wall or anything like that. It's why are we doing a project? What does it look right, right now? What does it cost right now? Um, and when will town meeting vote on it?
Well, you know, my, my opinion is a little different.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's up, up to the majority of the board. If we don't want to present the largest capital project, the town is, has had the opportunity to vote on in advance. We don't have to do so. Lisa?
I'm going to echo with the girls. I, I think placing it right in the middle, and I, it has to absolutely have and question period. Because people that come to town meeting, that's what you come for. You come to see what's happening for the year, you come to talk about it, you come to offer your opinion. Um, I don't, I don't think that just putting it in there for ten minutes is, is a realistic expectation. And depending on how it goes, we're looking at two nights. I don't think we're going to get through sixty, sixty-six of them in one night.
Yeah, I hear you, right?
So, putting it.
I, I don't think this changes it between one night and two nights. This isn't.
Doesn't, but I, what I'm saying, it's always harder to get more people, but I, without having an understanding of people should be able to ask questions, not just here it is. Because that's what we've always done in the past of a here it is, goodbye. You know, I want, I want to be able to have people, you know, it's a huge, it's a huge amount of money, it's their money. And they should have the right to be able to discuss it. So, um, and I just think putting it in the middle is, is, I don't like it there either. I think it'd be either before or after.
Yeah, um, I was just gonna say, like. I think it should be, maybe if we did it at the end, then the people who want to stay for it could stay for it. And we can also say, look, there will be other opportunities. To come to fire station presentations, but if you want one tonight, because you're already here. And it's at the end of the meeting, the people who want to stay will stay, and the people who can stay will stay. Maybe that's a good compromise.
Yeah, I, that's a, I thought, I thought that was a.
So at the end of what would probably be the second night of the zoning articles?
Right, yeah. I mean, it's a building project, and that's zoning, that's buildings. I don't know, in my head, it works.
I see it being closer to capital than zoning, but, but that's okay, if that's the opinion of the majority of the committee, that's, we'll move it to. Um, to the end, very end of the warrant. People supportive of that?
Yeah, yeah.
But the, with the, with the caveat that they get to ask questions.
Yes, and they get to ask as many questions as they want, realizing they're just making the, the meeting longer. But if they have questions, they don't care, right?
And, and since there's no vote, there doesn't have to be a quorum, so the people who, who leave, leave, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, and the people who, who are like, I don't have time for this tonight, I have to get home to my babysitter. I'll come to another meeting another night, they can do that.
Okay, um, I'm going to continue to, I agree, we're moving, uh, article, what is here, article sixteen, status report from the Fire Station Building Committee. Down to the end of the warrant. Um, I'm going to continue to use the numbers that we have there rather than trying to renumber on the fly, so just from the draft. Next, we have, um, a number of, uh, capital articles, say, um, you know, seventeen. Through, well, through, through thirty, any particular questions on any of those? Julian?
I would just like for article twenty, which is the police station siding replacement. For, um, the voters to know what the cost of repairing. The existing, uh, wood on the exterior of the building and painting, how the two costs would differ, because. I, I, I think, you know, we all can agree that. Siding will fade and, you know, it's, it's not, nothing is. Nothing is forever, and nothing is, is maintenance-free. And, you know, I think, personally, I think wood looks better on a municipal building than siding. And I would. And I would like to know the cost differential.
I'm not, I I remember hearing some conversations about this. I think it was at a financial planning meeting um that part of the funding of this is to have an architect or other building person look at all the sides of the building and help the DPW make some decisions on that. So I don't know if those dollar amounts could be available for a town meeting because the work to to determine that can't occur until there's more funding and I I I think that's accurate. You know, Jason, if you happen to know a little bit more about that, feel free to chime in. I wouldn't expect you to know all the details on that one.
I again, I I I was paying attention, but I don't remember all of the details from from that presentation, but I I know that the uh the seventy thousand dollars that was reappointed, I mean, it's the the project's different. I mean, it's the the siding is a different project than painting and then they they couldn't use the painting article to fund the the architect's report, which I think was ten to twenty thousand dollars of that total was was the architect's piece of it or the or architect or project manager or so forth. But there there's some form of overhead that's part of the two hundred thousand dollars that would be available under the language for the new article, but we we couldn't use painting money to do in our like an architectural study of the of the siding if if that makes sense.
Okay, um our DPW director happens to be um in the audience and has raised his hand, so Scott.
Hopefully he'll do a better job than I did.
Explanation. I didn't want to volunteer mentally raise the hand. Um but Scott, I appreciate you coming in. If you could um just uh provide us any additional insight you can on that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just uh say ditto to what Jason said. No, um he he's he's accurate. The original article was first was for painting. The expectation was that we would not need to engage an architect or any professional services. Um after looking at it with the the painters, um realized that it was not uh uh in a condition that would accept paint without substantial uh clapboard replacement. Um so the 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 approach was to hire an architect to come in and do the evaluation, cost comparisons on what's the most cost effective uh uh process going forward. Um and that's how we started this new article conversation.
To answer uh your question, Julian?
No, I'm sorry, it doesn't. So so what was the cost for repairing the clapboards and then painting? That's what I think the voters should be able to know. Was it was if we kept with the wood siding and repaired and painted, was that gonna be five hundred thousand dollars or what what is the cost differential between the two?
Uh we won't know that without having an architect come in, assess the condition of the building and prepare a cost estimate. I'm a I'm a civil engineer. Uh my experience is horizontal construction. I don't have the expertise to estimate a clapboard, trim board, replacement um and and painting versus uh siding versus a vinyl siding. I'd have to hire somebody to come in and do that. I can't just ask to contract it to come in and do it. They don't do um you know, for bids um for free, you know, they they bid on a project that's gonna be constructed. Um so we would have to solicit bids. In order to solicit bids, the contractor needs to know what he's doing. In order for him to know what he's doing, we need to prepare specifications on how to do what he's doing. Um that's what the architect is for.
So when you have the you had an architect come in who recommended siding, correct?
No.
Oh, you, oh.
No, we 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 brought out a painting.
You brought, you recommended siding.
We brought out a painting contractor to take a look at it. Um when we looked at it, we weren't sure if the condition was adequate. The painting contractor came out, took a closer look at it and said, we have a lot of nails that are protruding from the from the clapboard. And the trim board is rotted. Well, I was well aware that the trim board was rotted, but I didn't see the extent or wasn't aware of the extent of the clapboard damage. Brought an architect out to confirm that, to make sure the con the painting contractor wasn't just selling us a bill of goods in hopes of doing clapboard work as well. The architect came out for free and looked at it and said, you're correct. He's correct. There's more extensive work here. The surface won't accept paint, and if it does, it won't last for more than a few years.
Because.
Because the clapboard is in poor condition. It's deteriorated.
Okay, so so basically, just so I'm clear on this and everybody's clear. In in order to look at another option other than siding, we'd have to have an architect come in for a questionable amount of money. Tell us what it would take to to restore the building as it was originally built with the wood siding and for a questionable amount of money.
Yes, we would we would engage the services of an architect to evaluate the the project, provide us cost estimates going forward with what the uh most cost effective alternative is, prepare bids specifications. My office would bid it out. They would be providing technical specifications and quantities only. And then we would bid it out for a contractor to uh for a contractor to be awarded and the and the work to proceed. If the if the goal is to get that recommendation in advance, then we'd have to hire the architect in advance and have the architect come out and do the evaluation before town meeting. In which case, we need funds for that. And when the original art article was approved last year, it did not include any professional services in the language, so the determination was that it was not I don't know, Jason, if it's legal or appropriate, what the proper terminology is, but it wasn't, it's not appropriate for an architect to to use those funds for an architect.
And and just would you have any idea how much an architect would cost at this point?
Five, ten grand to come out and 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 evaluate it. I'm thinking something in that range, maybe five and another five or eight to do the technical specifications and um um quantity takeoffs. So in order to in order to bid it out, we need to tell a contractor how many linear feet of clapboard or how many square feet of 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 um siding um is needs to be removed and replaced. I don't have the capabilities of doing that estimate. If I say everything, the bid will likely come in too high over the appropriation and we won't be able to do the project. If I go too low, there'll be such change orders um that'll look like we didn't know what we were going doing going out for the bid. So I need a professional to come in and say seventy percent of the clapboard needs to be replaced. All of the trim does. Here is what you replace it with for materials. And here's the process for coating it, painting it. Or for vinyl siding. I I'm not sure which direction to go in.
Lisa, uh Julian, are you are you well set for now?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Lisa?
Okay, I'm I'm a little confused because I had talked to Chief Flyver about this last year. And when it went to town meeting, he was told, yes, to get a get a price and he had a contractor who was going to paint it and replace the boards that needed replacing. And the price was on based on that invoice was given to town meeting and with a date to be used and finished at the end of the fiscal year. And then then nothing happened and it just kind of sat in limbo. And then in next the year that we've now heard, have things changed in the old, well, I think the last time it was even painted, it might have been painted by Asavet. I don't even think it was a like a general bid.
It was not painted by Asavet. It was painted by the Sheriff's Department.
Was that the the inmates?
Yes, correct. Asavet's not allowed to go on uh scaffolding or lifts. Um if they were, I would certainly have uh talked to Asavet about coming in to do it, but they're not allowed to to do aerial work.
So is this possibility not open again for the for the inmates to come and do it?
It is not. They've they've canceled that program. They canceled it during COVID and it's no, it's still not um not available.
Okay.
We we looked into that.
Alright, so it seems that, I mean, a couple of things are are changing. Normally with all building, small buildings, not all buildings, small building, you know, upkeeps. Usually find you get a contractor come three or contractors that come out, look at it and say, okay, this is what I'll do it for and this is what your material costs are gonna be. I don't know why there was only one invoice, but that invoice was brought to town meeting and town meeting went through the process of okay and with a deadline. And now one, this doesn't even have a deadline on it anymore. Do we have to go back? There's a couple of questions. Do we have to go back, change that one out? Then, you know, take it back because it wasn't completed. And two, how did in a year's time, did that much much area rot more than in, you know, a year's time? It seems like that's an awful lot more damage that happened to the building. And um and in years past, I don't remember that you had to do an RFP for that sort of thing. Is that like the new change where the RFP comes and they say you have to have X amount of footage of clapboarding and nails and this kind of screw and uh all of that now is changed so that we have to get, we have to hire somebody to write the RFP. We have to hire architects to come. I mean, isn't there a a lower cost person that comes in besides an architect to give you the price, give you the what needs to be done? I mean, I think of architects, I think of them drawing your art, your building.
So there's there's a couple of questions in there through the chair. Um one is regarding the the condition change. As I stated earlier, it can be painted. And the painting contractor who came out said it's not gonna last more than three to five years because of deterioration of of the wood. The um would be, that's that's a perfectly viable approach to go out there and have him replace some some uh fascia board and some trim and have them paint it. And we'll be back discussing this again in three to five years to do it again.
Oh, yeah.
That did not, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, we are going, we haven't, we have a um a building um what are they called? Assessment?
Yep, facility condition assessment, yes.
No, 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 um sorry, it's late. Um there feasibility, there's a feasibility study in the queue for the fire station, for the police station for twenty 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 twenty-five or twenty two or twenty twenty-nine, which is a few years from now. So are you gonna spend more money for a building that you're going to either have to redo, enlarge? I don't know why, you know, it's in the queue. It needs work. It's I've I've had tours there. So that's a few years away. Is it? Is it more cost advantageous to do a smaller amount of fix it now for the next five years so that at that point, you're looking to do something else with the building than it is to go and refit the whole building um with a with a vinyl that is not, you know, who's, what if you don't stay there? What if you move from there? So that's my question. The reason for asking that is kind of a, I mean, it's.
Could I make a, I I'm gonna make a suggestion. I apologize for interrupting. We're getting into the weeds on an important article with one of the key people who would have some information is the police chief that's not on our meeting tonight. I'm gonna suggest that unless there is a belief by the board that we shouldn't have this article on the warrant, we keep it on there. Maybe Lisa and Julian, you could work with, you know, Diane and Tim and police chief to get some of these questions answered that are hard to answer a little bit live. And in advance of our next meeting, if you still have concerns and want to withdraw the article or modify it in some way at that point, we can consider that. Um or if there is a way of providing some, I I agree to Julian's original comment. It would be helpful. It would be great if we could have those numbers based on what I'm hearing from Scott and Jason. I don't think that's feasible. Maybe they'll find up a way to put some some estimates together for for the phrasing there. Rather than go down this road in not being able to answer some questions. Scott?
Yeah, just just really quickly to follow up on the second question. Um the intent of of an architect would be to prepare technical specifications and it'll be an invitation for bid to general contractors. Nothing has changed in the procurement law. Anything over fifty thousand dollars means I need for construction means I need to go out for for public bid. The expectation was that the architect would put together technical specifications and my office would do the uh bid solicitation process, the same thing we we did for the library project, um the roof and the um uh the the plaster repair. So that nothing has changed legally between then and now. Um so but I just wanted to make sure that was clarified, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Is is that reasonable for folks? We can continue talking about it if we want to. I I try trying to trying to move us along.
Yeah, but but in in terms of procedure, does that if we close the warrant tonight, then we have to open it again and or
We we could.
Just adding information to the.
Yeah, I I think what you're after, Julian, is different than what Lisa was questioning. I think what you're after is getting some some explanatory information.
Right.
Below the article that we can work on. I don't, I have no idea whether staff would be able to come up with those estimates or not, but we can ask them to take a look at that. Um that's unrelated to the article itself, which is what we're what we're doing tonight is just really just the title of the article, not even the dollar amount of the article. And I think what Lisa was questioning was a little bit different as I think you were almost asking, do we need this article at all? I mean, if your suggestion is we remove it, then let's talk about removing it. But I'd rather not do so without input from the department head that I.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I I wouldn't want to remove an article
Remove it.
Without Chief Griffin here. And and if they, I don't know that these are questions that he could answer, but it does seem like if we're gonna have a discussion about this article, he should probably be here.
Yeah, I'm not asking to remove it. I'm just asking for details.
Well, maybe we just keep going then.
Since it. All right, are we are we okay moving moving along, keeping twenty on there and continuing along? Okay. Again, any other questions on, I forget where I started, you know, seventeen or so through thirty?
Thirty? Oh, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
The um enclosed public health trailer. So this is a new trailer?
Um, you know, again, we don't have, uh Scott, maybe you can provide some insight to this. I I know you were you were there during the presentation uh last week at appropriations, I think it was.
Yep, yeah, I was at uh I presented this to the Financial Planning Committee. The public health trailer that we currently have is old. Um it saw a lot of action during during COVID. Um more action than it has seen its entire existence before. It's a two thousand twelve trailer, enclosed trailer, and it's not like a um, you know, a landscape trailer or a materials trailer. It has cabinets, lighting, uh conditioned air. It's it's, you know, it you've you saw it at town meeting when we had the two town meetings out at the high school. Um it was parked at a lot of the um vaccination and testing sites. Uh we saw a lot of the two things, a lot of the shortcomings of the trailer for those needs as well as the the deteriorated condition of it. For example, there is no, there there the easy thing, there is no awning. So we have easy ups around the around the trailer, which is cumbersome and awkward when it comes to any community event where there's either wind or need for put up uh, you know, community access to it. Second, the door on the back of it is a is a um a drop down door like a ramp. It's not barn doors. And if you've ever been around a trailer that has a drop down ramp, they have cables that go from the corners up to the top, um which is not conducive to to pedestrian use. Um there's one pedestrian door on the side of it and the and the trailer is deteriorating. It's a um it's a steel trailer. You know, ninety percent of the trailers you see now are aluminum, so they don't rust and they don't deteriorate. Uh we saw the shortcomings of the trailer and we show up, we saw the condition of it. It 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 parks at the highway garage. It serves as public health storage. Um so when you go in there, there's cases of masks, there's cots in the event there was a um an emergency shelter need. Um there's a lot, the the large uh health uh bins, you see the large blue bins on wheels, those live in there. So this is a replacement trailer for that existing trailer we have. It's a it's an equipment replacement. And the um it's gonna be a bit different. It's gonna be more cu- uh customized toward that public health community event service.
So we have this um this cooperative situation with Southborough and Westborough. It's the borough's co- cooperative health thing.
Yep.
It are they? Are they helping? I- is this gonna be a shared piece of equipment?
No, this will be ours.
Each town has their own?
I don't know what Southborough and Westborough have. That shared trailer that um the um the group had was not this trailer. That shared trailer was a small enclosed trailer. the um, the group had was not this trailer. That shared trailer was a small enclosed trailer. Um, typical of what you would see behind a pickup truck driving around with a lawnmower in it. Not conditioned space, no lighting, no air conditioning, no heat. That was not what it is. Uh, we used this trailer, I mean, this trailer served as um, a comfort shelter at the uh, the first um, high school field uh, uh, town meeting we had where it was ninety-five degrees out for three hours. Um, and we had people who were in discomfort who got into there for some air conditioning. So no, this would not be a regional trailer. This would be Northborough's trailer.
And, and.
The other towns have these.
I'm not sure. Not, not, the current trailer is Northborough's trailer. It's not a regional trailer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Julianne, any other questions on that item? Okay, again, uh, through Article thirty, any other questions? Okay, um. Let's just say thirty and thirty-one to make it, to make it easy on lazy Mitch for being able to, uh, to turn the page after thirty-two. So those are a couple of uh, Melican Middle School capital projects. Any questions on those? Um. Thirty-three is a feasibility study for the Peaslee Elementary School. Um, that I think was, was it nine hundred thousand dollars? That's a, that's a large item. Um. Jason, uh, could you let us know how we plan to fund that? Is that a, a debt project?
Yeah, it would be a borrowing authorization. And um, we, I mean, I'm sure the language is uh, provided by the MSBA for the, for the article language because um, we're gonna, we're applying to participate with the MSBA for that project. So hopefully we'll be getting reimbursed fifty percent. So we lo- in all likelihood, wouldn't be exposed to the, the nine hundred thousand dollars of, of that project, more like the half of that in, in a number of years when, when it's time to borrow for it. But um, yeah, so yes, that's a, a borrowing authorization.
This is, this is the next step in the, in the Peaslee School project. Any other questions about this item? Okay, um. Then there are three lease and power agreements. Um. So these are not, not expenses items at all. Um, these are required because for a town to engage in a lease longer than three years, you need town meeting approval. And uh, and these would be long leases where we'd be um, essentially a, a exchange, a company would come in and provide some solar panels at the schools in exchange for uh, contracted uh, pricing. For the uh, for electricity that those panels produce. Um. And one of them is for, this caught me a little bit by surprise for the Z School, which we know we're gonna be doing a roofing project on. They won't do the, the solar panel until the roof is complete, but they wanted to get at least the, the lease approved by town meeting. Any other question, any questions on those? Oh, and, and the Melican item that was discussed previously has been removed by the school committee. That um, I think they want to do some more thought on that. That's not for the Melican roof. That would be for the parking lot, one of those um, overhangs over the, over the parking lot area. But that's been removed at this point.
What, what article is that?
That, well, that's an article that's been removed, so it's not, it's not on here. Um, it would have been maybe thirty-eight, I'm not sure. But that was, um, I forget it was in, it was our draft last time, but we have received some conversation about that and communication from the school committee in the past. Um, Article thirty-seven, consolidated personnel bylaw, any questions on that? We need to do that no matter what. Um, at least have the article there. Um, thirty-eight and thirty-nine, um, Tim put in placeholders for those for some changes to the appointments uh, for appropriations and financial planning. Um, we know that there's been some conversations in recent weeks um, about whether we needed to, to make some changes to that. Um, Tim put those on there. Um, I, my personal feeling is I think we may want to make some changes to that by, those bylaws and the, the details of how those committees work. I think it needs some more thought. So my, my reaction is don't rush something on there. Um, let's think about it. Let's put it forward maybe to the municipal code and bylaw committee, giving, give them some, some work to do, um, sort of in their traditional off-season. And uh, and, and have something thorough to come back to next time around. Um, but I'm, I'm open to ideas on that.
I agree with you. So you're recommending we take off Article thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Right. I, I totally agree. I think it's too early.
I'm sorry, Lisa. I, I hea- heard that you were speaking, but I could not hear what you said.
I said we're taking them off then.
That, uh, that's my suggestion.
So the controversy that we've just gone through, how has that affected life?
It isn't. I mean, that's, that one, that's been resolved.
So is it something that, then we just do something on a selectmen policy level? Which you could do. You don't have to go put charter change.
So the, this, these would be bylaw changes, not charter changes. So the current bylaw says there are two, two changes that Tim is recommending. One is, I wouldn't say recommending, that he, he threw out there for ideas. One is to increase the size of each of the committees from six to seven. Um, so that there would be an odd number. Typically committees have odd numbers. My only concern with increasing it is the town has had a hard time filling some of those slots. So, you know, giving, give us some thought for, you know, are there other ways we could address that or ways we could advertise that more comprehensively before we increase it? Um, and I know there's even been some discussion about potentially decreasing it as a way of getting to odd and simpler. Uh, you know, I don't want to suggest that here. That's just one of the things that's been said. Uh, and his other um, item to throw out there is right now there's a prohibition of members of those committees serving on other committees also. And um, the language that he put into this draft would remove that prohibition for ad hoc committees. So if a committee was defined in our charter, charter or bylaw, it would still stand. If a committee was created, such as a building committee project, would no longer have that prohibition. Um, I, I think there are a lot of things to think about there. There's um, I, I think we should have some more thought before making a change like that. I'm not opposed to making the change, but I, I worry about rushing into it based on one issue that we, you know, that just happened. And trying to make a global and per- permanent change based on, on just that, that item.
Okay.
So.
I definitely, I appreciate that we'll put some more thought into it and I appreciate that Tim recognized the need for it and put that out there, but my preference would be to just do a little bit more research on it as well.
I think I'm hearing consensus then on removing what is, in our draft is thirty-eight and thirty-nine from the warrant. Okay, everyone okay with that? Okay, um. Forty is an item that we'll certainly be discussing at length a week from tonight, um, in joint with the Board of Health. Um, the uh, amendment to administrative code for creation of a health and human services department. Um, I think we know that this was, this was coming. We have a lengthy report from CMRPC on that and we'll be discussing it then. Um, so all we're deciding now is yes, it will go on the warrant. Again, potentially if we needed to, we could pull it later. Um. Forty-one was another item that Tim suggested and I have no backup and I don't think Di has any backup on it for authorization to fund spaces for public parking. To, does anyone on this call know anything more about that?
No.
I love more public parking. That's, I, Lisa?
Um, when I, uh, hmm, a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, I heard that the the church, you, the church at the corner uh, across from Comby's?
Trinity.
Yay!
Trinity, yeah.
The Trinity Church was looking for ways of getting some funding. And that they would consider leasing some of their parking lot. And I said, oh, well, that sounds like something we could really look into. And I, I did pass along um, Jean Leaf's number to Tim to call her directly because she's one of the board of directors or she is the chairman of the board of directors, I'm not sure. And um, he said that I would have to be able to get an article on to have funding available to do that if in fact we were able to pull, pull that off. So I do believe that's, I may, maybe wrong, but that was a discussion that we had talked about. And I think Julianne, were you in the uh, in the office when we talked about that? Yes, Friday. So um, so that's what I assume it to be. Because I think we could do a win-win. Trinity Church would be happy and the people in town being able to have some parking spaces would be happy.
I mean, it sounds like it could be a good idea.
Yeah, um, it's my understanding though that um, I mean, I'm, I'm not like naysaying the idea of keeping it on the warrant, but it's my understanding that Trinity is um, going to be up for sale, so I don't know how long-term that deal could.
Yeah, well, when I talked with her, that was, that was to try to prevent that from happening.
Okay.
They couldn't get anything if they couldn't find a funding mechanism.
Yeah.
That would be their alternative.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, they can sell some of their land. They don't have to, they don't have to just sell the church or whatever. But because there's so limited amount of land in town to park on.
Right, they do have a nice big parking lot.
And it's centrally located, so. Um, that's, that's what I'm assuming that's that for.
Um, do we want to leave it on there at this point, even though we don't have any detail or?
Yeah, because it wouldn't, wouldn't go. Yeah, you can always pass over it that night.
Yeah.
But I'd leave it on there instead of hamstringing.
Yeah, okay. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
All right, so we'll, we'll ask Tim obviously to provide some more information at our next meeting. And hopefully there's, you know, if, whether it be the item that Lisa was referring to or something else, hopefully there's enough information that we can, um, can understand the applications of that. Um. Article forty-two is the acquisition of four thirty-two Whitney Street, which we have talked about before. Um, I think.
These are all CPC, Mitch?
Yeah, that's.
We're gonna be talking about those at another meeting, so can we just skip over all of those?
Uh, absolutely, unless anybody has any particular question. That one I thought was interesting because i- it has the first, uh, the first version of what I've seen for how it gets funded. Uh, so, you know, again, that could change between now and town meeting. Um. All right, any questions on any of the CPC items? Okay, um. Recision of unauthorized unused debt. Um, I love that, that that is in there. I'm a big fan of cleaning some of those things up. Actually, um, Jason, would you mind coming back? And I've got a question for you that I could have asked earlier. But this reminded me of it. Um, I think earlier articles for Melican, this was, I think it was thirty-one and thirty-two. Um, use some of the, use some of the same money that is also being rescinded. I mean, obviously we spend mu- some and rescind the rest.
It's a, yeah, to, it's, um, it's a two thousand eleven article.
Yeah.
Uh, it goes back some way. There's some history to it. It was a complicated project. What, I was here for that, uh, that was near the beginning of my career and I remember it, but what happened was the MSBA came up with what was called the Green Repair Pro- Program. And you had to have shovel-ready projects and you had to demonstrate you had local funding. So the town had this um, piece of gift money from the developers at the, the Northborough Crossing Shopping Center. So we went forward with the initial phase of there, they, the select board voted to apply money from that gift fund to the um, to the green repair project at the, at the middle school. So um, and I'm probably giving you way too much details for, for this hour of the night, but um, what had happened was that they discovered um, there, there was a complication with the project. They couldn't go forward with the full scope of the project as it was, so it got approved for a smaller, um, smaller scope. But we'd already gone through with the funding for the um, the higher amount. Um, we got reimbursement from the MSBA and per MSBA language, we voted a borrowing authorization. Um, the select board voted to fund the remaining share of the town's portion of that, so we never incurred debt for that project. Um, from, from those gift funds. So at the same time, the project came in under budget because the scope got limited for the, for the project. Um, so there's a hundred two thousand dollars left sitting in the article for cash. That's the remainder of those transfers that the select board voted to make to it. Um, which they're re-appropriating for, for um, their middle school uh, projects in the current day. Um, but then there's also borrowing authorization for the, for the balance of what, where it came in under budget, so that, that just small remainder is within that, those numbers. And sorry, Mitch, I know that was a, it's a very convoluted thing with a lot of things going on with it, but.
Yeah, you, you got at the root of my question, which was, um, I knew this was a, a debt-related item. But did we already have, did we already borrow that money and it's been sitting there? It turned out it was gift money. We're not borrowing new money for those thirty-one, th- those two Melican articles, so you've answered that question. Um, it was as complicated as I thought it might be, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um. We are down at, that was forty-nine. Any other questions on the recision item? Forty-nine, um. Uh, we're gonna be meeting, I assume, with the planning board later. Any questions on any of fifty through through sixty-three, are the zoning items? Any, are there any items that we want to talk about now? Okay, I'm seeing none. Uh, street acceptances, um, we've had that discussion earlier tonight on Harrington Way. Um. The generic reports item, and of course we'll have one, uh, as we discussed earlier on Fire Station Project. Um. And believe it or not, that ends our review of the warrant. Any, uh, any other questions before we, or comments before we entertain a motion to close the warrant? Julianne?
Is it appropriate, um, under the, you, you know, the incorporation of um, health and human services to, to indicate on the warrant that there is a whole study done from, by CMRPC? Could that be?
I'm sure in the commentary that um, will be included.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, it would be um, shocking if it were not. Okay. Um, so I think the only changes that we have made, correct me if I'm wrong, is we moved what is um, presented as the presentation, the Article sixteen, the uh, school, the status report about the fire station building project to the end of the warrant. And then we removed Articles thirty-eight and thirty-nine from this draft, which were the appropriations and financial planning committee amendments. Does everyone agree with those changes?
Yes.
Okay, um, excellent. And with that, I will entertain a motion to close the town meeting warrant as discussed.
I move the board vote to close the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We have a warrant. Good work, everyone. Um. Next up, we have select board member reports. Let's see in the order on my screen. Lisa, any reports tonight?
My God, I'm first. I'm never first. Okay. Of course we have reports. Thank you for all waiting until ten-thirty to listen to my, my bleary-eyed reports. Okay, um, I'd like to extend a warm congratulations to Edgar Blanchett on becoming the commander of the Northborough VFW this past fall. The VFW supports many fundraisers for townwide organizations such as the Boys and Girl Scouts and, and many others. They also host an open mic night on Wednesdays. They have an Instagram account, which is at VFP234. If you want to get some more information on them, they do not have their, their website address. I have to, if you didn't get that information, sorry, can't give it to you. Okay, um, next, we had a groundswell of new volunteers coming forward in the last couple of weeks. Jeff Knight for Appropriations, Rob Babcock, Ken Picard, Jonathan Ray, Susan Satori, and Scott Stockland for the Finance Committee, which was wonderful. Um, and I want to thank you all for offering your time and expertise to. Um, and I want to thank you all for offering your time and expertise to help us spend our money. There are still, uh, many openings for other committees. Please go to the town website and see what committees you have interests in. Not only is it a great way for newcomers to meet their co-residents, it may create a new direction for the vision in Northborough. On February twenty-ninth, uh, Susa's Licas planned a be kind opportunity for the residents to meet select persons, Lisa and Laura at the Salea Vi Bistro, whose owner is always at the ready to give back to the town. The concerns that we heard, and Laura can give her, give her her story in a minute, um, was the lack of sidewalks throughout town. Um, the projected cost of the new fire project. And as I say, Laura will give you a bit more of what, what was in her ear. Um, the appro- the appropriations committee met that night and the new police chief reviewed his budget for the first time and mentioned the possibility of a comfort pub for the station and for certain calls. It's been coming, something that's done in quite a lot of police stations and, uh, he thought he might, uh, follow up on the idea. I thought you might like that, Kristen. Um, and he said he originally had talked to the Be Well Group to fund it. And he's going to move forward and ask them for his little pocket of money he put aside in a request a while ago. Um. The senior center director Kendra also reviewed her budget and listed many programs and opportunities that the center has offered. And I'm not going to go through all of them because I'm too old to remember. The Friends of the Seniors, uh, donated a large sum of money to help with expenses there. And this year there will be more events for residents to enjoy. The interim health director and library director reviewed their budgets, um, and additional information with grace and articulation. Um, on March seventh, the appropriations me- met again and CPC Finance and IT Department gave their budget presentations. Um, and the unveiling of new monitors in the select board room indicate that the hybrid meetings are coming soon. Or if you read it in the CA, maybe they more, know more than we do. Um, and finally, um, I wanted to follow up on a, a conversation we had in a new business the last meeting where I asked about, uh, municipal signs for the town and having a theme and, uh, signs to look at. And, um, I did a little bit more research. Hold on, I'm on the wrong page.
Lisa, I, I'm sorry to interrupt on a, on a, an ongoing item. It really needs to be on an agenda for, um, for, for any presentation or discussion. I, we can certainly have that. I don't have any, any objection at all to that item, but that would be my suggestion is we schedule that as an agenda item for you to present your thoughts.
I think we, I think we need to do that. And, and by the way, it says, the signs are actually a brand ambassadors. Simple municipal sign can serve the purposes of informing the community. These signs give recognition about the place to the community members. And the members get information about the police station, city parks, yada, yada, yada. And, uh, it gives people the awareness of, um, us all working together. So I'd like to be able to do that soon and put that in. Thank you. That's the end of my reports.
Laura, any reports tonight?
Yeah, thank you very much. So I had attended a couple of the recent meetings, the fire station, the town offices meeting. And one of my thoughts were going forward, you know, along with a lot of the projects that we've got. If we can get some type of estimate on what the cost of projects would be before people invest a lot of their time and staff resources. Just to make sure it aligns with our boards, I guess, I was with, just that we're all on the same page. So that was just a thought because I, I'd like to avoid big surprises with, um, with costs in the future. And if there's a way that we can do that, I just figured I would throw that out there. I loved having the coffee hours hosted by Community Affairs. So thank you. It was really nice to sit down with Lisa and talk to some of the folks in the community. One neat idea that came out of that was a suggestion to host municipal elections on Saturday. So we could keep those municipal elections at Malickan and avoid a lot of the challenges that we face, you know, with some of the feedback. So that's something to consider for the future along those lines. There was, you know, again, surprise around the cost of the fire station and that definitely is an ongoing, you know, area that I keep hearing feedback on. I did attend the financial planning committee meeting and they're reviewing the projects. Uh, I got there late, uh, but it was some great presentations on what we're looking forward and what we've discussed tonight. I wanted to thank all the volunteers for the state primaries who came out, towns, the town clerk and his staff. And the volunteers made it a really great day. Hopefully everybody got out to vote. I got to, um, stop by a community meals that was hosted by the BSA Girls Troop in Northborough. They did a great job organizing that at Trinity Church, um, last Wednesday evening. If you've got questions on that, you're welcome to reach out to the Junior Women's Club for feedback on that. And, um, this is just, just now that with the longer days and the warmer weather, if the, if the drivers can just be a little bit aware of the pedestrians and folks using streets again. It's nice to see lots of activity out there, but just please make sure to give lots of space to folks on the road. My last question is, are we, in this, maybe another question for, for, uh, Andy Tad, Andy Gabb. But are we all set with the clickers for town meetings? Is that, do they have everything that they need for that? And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Laura. Um, Julianne, any reports tonight?
Uh, so I just have an announcement from Sustainable Northborough. They are hosting a walk at Edmund Hill Woods on Saturday, April sixth at ten AM. Uh, the, the walk will be led by a conservationist from Sudbury Valley Trustees, who will identify, help us identify, uh, problem areas and invasive species and learn ways to restore the, the, um, the land to its, you know, to more natural vegetation. Um, so if you're interested, please RSVP to sustainablenorthborough@gmail. And, uh, my second thing is, um, I just want to remind folks, and Diane, if you could help me out here. I think the deadline to apply for new boards, committees and commissions is April fifteenth.
No, under the reappointment policy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, no, it was the.
Um, it's March fifteenth.
March fifteenth, yes.
March fifteenth, that's right. April fifteenth is taxes. Okay. Okay, so, um, but I, I think it bears clarification that that's if, you know, if you're applying for something, that there might be a couple of candidates. If there are boards and committees in June that have openings, that's a perfectly fine time to apply, correct? Okay. Only. All right, that ends my report.
Thank you, Julianne. Kristen, any reports tonight?
Hi, um, thanks. Uh, that's a really good point, Julianne, too. I think people, some people put their names in for boards and committees a few weeks ago, maybe, and haven't had it interview scheduled yet because we were waiting for this deadline to pass so that otherwise it's very complicated for, I don't, Diane, are you still organizing those Zoom sessions or those interviews?
Yeah, um, I'm working with Angie in our.
In teaching for us now, yeah. So that's, it's a very complicated thing with so many people's schedules and everything. So I hope people just understand and thank you for your patience if you've been waiting for a little while. Okay, um, so my vague, um, information is about the town hall feasibility study committee. We met last Wednesday. Um, but we are waiting for the final numbers from Icon, who are the architects, on what the costs of each building could potentially be. So we didn't make an official recommendation. Plus, we were missing one member. So we're, we're trying to set up another meeting. Um, last I heard, we're leaning towards March twenty-seventh, that hopefully all the members of the committee can make it. And that's the night we'll vote to make a recommendation to the select board about which building proposal makes the most sense for the town. Somehow it's not a conflict of interest for me to vote on that committee and then also be on this committee, which is just funny to my brain. But anyway, um. A lot of times, I do think as a select board member at those meetings, though, I think it's really good to have a select board member at those meetings because ultimately, I keep using the metaphor of a puzzle. It really is a puzzle to figure out what to do with everything in the town. It's not just which building should we put town hall in? That's one isolated question, but it's not an isolated thing. It's a whole puzzle. So, excuse me, I've been going off camera a lot tonight because I have a bad cold and I didn't want anyone to have to watch me blow my nose. So I apologize. Um. The Historical Society is looking for new members. And those, um, of those members, they are looking for people to help get involved on their various boards. They are the nicest people ever. Laura is one of them. They are hoping for more women and I think everyone should go volunteer with them. They're really great folks. And they're really interesting. Um, and the scholarship committee, um, applications for the Northborough Scholarship, um, are due by March fifteenth. So since all you Algonquin seniors are out there watching this select board meeting. Um, but anyway, the, um, parents, the applications are due soon. Um, the committee has one vacancy and one anticipated vacancy. Um, and they're doing their, their grad, graduate sign fundraiser this year again. So partnering with HB Printing in town. Um, the decision on the recipients for the scholarship will be made before the end of April. And, uh, Liz Nolan was telling me she also encourages people to take a look at their tribute donation platform, um, which you can get a link to, hello, on the, um, town website on the scholarship committee page. And if you're interested in checking out the scholarship committee, um, they're also a really great bunch of people. Um, the next meeting is on the twentieth, so I guess that means March twentieth at the library conference room at six thirty PM. Anyone is welcome to sit in on the meeting. Um, I'm looking forward to talking about ARPA funding again. And I will post on my Facebook page, um, the link to this. But also, uh, Norm Corbin wrote a really interesting article for the Community Advocate about the history of Four West Main Street. And everyone should read it. It's really interesting. It's not that long and has some good pictures. And also President John Adams used to hang out in Northborough. Now I know that. Great trivia. He, uh, because there used to be a tavern on that spot and he used to go all the time. So, anyway, okay, that's my report. Thanks.
Can I ask Kristen a question?
Sure.
So, uh, when Icon comes with the numbers of the cost of the town hall possibilities, are they going to tell us, um, okay, so let's just say, we, if you sell eleven Pierce, you will bring in this much money?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the numbers we really needed were what everything is worth and how the, you know, all the different machinations of how it could work.
Okay.
And evidently, the current town hall sixty-three Main Street is, um, a really trendy, cool building to buy and is worth a lot of money. That, that, that was sort of what they intimated at the, at the public session and I had no idea, but I think that's great. Hey.
Oh no.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thanks Kristen. Thanks Julianne for the question. Um, I've got a couple of items under my report. One, um, the Northborough Power Choice, um, public input process that we talked about at recent meetings that concludes this Wednesday. So, um, for anyone that has any input or just wants to read a little bit more about what the board is trying to do to lower, uh, residents' electric energy costs. Um, please go to the town website and click on Northborough Power Choice in the upper right-hand corner of probably just about any page, but certainly the homepage. Um, and we're, we're eagerly interested in public input, but that process closes Wednesday so that we can move forward with the next part of the process. Um, and the other thing I wanted to make mention was mentioned briefly, the future of our possible hybrid meetings. Um, I spoke with, uh, Dana from our cable department who handled the installation. Uh, you informed me that the installation of that equipment, uh, was completed the end of last week. Excuse me. Um, his next step is he needs to meet with the, uh, IT department to talk about some integration, uh, questions and make sure security is, uh, is, is well situated for that because it will be a different use of the town hall network. Um, he is hoping that he has, uh, those questions resolved and the final configuration of that equipment done, maybe by the end of this week, early next week. So, um, it is possible that by our next regular meeting on the twenty-fifth, we might be able to, if we want to, to have a hybrid meeting. So that'll be my question to the board. Are folks interested if the equipment is ready? Uh, do we want to try to have a hybrid meeting that night? Will people be available to come in in person? Will anyone be away and could be a, a remote member? Um.
Promise I won't sneeze on you by then, I'll be.
I'd love it.
Yes, let's try it.
Okay, Laura?
And do you think we could try out our clickers while we're there?
Well, we're not allowed to vote by clicker by, for, for boards and committees. We need to, um, vote audibly.
Right, but we can do a survey.
We can.
Let's do a survey of the.
We can play with, I'd rather not play with the equipment at a meeting, but maybe we could ask Andy for a little demo beforehand.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, okay. So I, I'll keep everyone informed, as I know Diane and Tim will, about, uh, the feasibility of that. But it's, it's good to know that the board is ready to get started on that. If the, if the equipment is ready for us, we're ready to give it a try. Uh, at our next regular meeting on the twenty-fifth. That ends my report. Uh, Diane, any reports tonight?
Thank you, Mitch. Um, I just, I have a quick one. I just, you had mentioned briefly the select board and the Board of Health is going to hold a joint public hearing on March eighteenth, uh, to consider the creation of a Health and Human Services Department. And I just wanted to let people know that the full report on the Health and Human Services Strategic Assessment can be found under Town News on the front page of the website, the town's website.
Okay, thanks Diane.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, uh, next up, we have execution of a couple of cemetery deeds. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds one-one-eight-four and one-one-eight-five.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Julianne. Was that Lisa that seconded that?
It was Laura.
Laura, okay. Sorry, I, I didn't see anybody's mouth move. I just heard the voice quietly. So motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Does anyone have any other business, uh, to, for, before us, before we go to public comment and close?
No, I, I can throw my voice though, so be careful.
All right, uh, hearing nothing new, uh, you're, are there any members of the audience who wish to offer public comment? If so, just raise your electronic hand. I'd be happy to recognize you. Going once. Going twice. I declare public comment closed. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen to adjourn. All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We are adjourned ten fifty-two PM. Thank you very, very much, everyone.